Hello, everybody. Good morning and we're going to call to order our board meeting. Welcome, everyone. And we are going to start with our pledge. If Mr. Gallo would lead us in the pledge.
I'd be delighted to. If you would please stand.
Thank you.
And put your hand over your heart and then repeat after me. Ready? Begin. I'd like to lead.
Interruptions to the class of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One.
Under God.
In the God. Indivisible. But never can justice.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo.
You're very welcome and thank you.
And I think it's appropriate to say happy birthday to you again. So everyone knows.
Thank you very much.
We are now at approval of the agenda 1.3.
So move.
Thank you.
Second, Margaret Hill.
It's been moved and properly second. We're going to have voice vote. Dr. Wyatt.
Aye.
Mr. Gallo.
Aye.
Dr. Hill.
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina.
Aye.
Dr. Flores.
Aye.
And I don't believe has Mr. Tillman joined us yet?
Aye.
Thank you. And aye for Gwen. There he is. All right. Thank you so much. We are now. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion carried. I think that was all ayes unanimous. Thank you. We're now moving to 1.4. The inspirational message. And I have the pleasure of doing that.
Madam President. Do we? Are we going to pull? Sorry for interrupting you. Are we just Dr. Flores? Are we going to pull items now or later?
We will do it later. It's not said on the. It's back to the old way. And the student is on the phone, so she'll be fine.
Okay, so not until we get to consent will we pull?
When we get consent, we will pull.
Okay, I guess I misunderstood that. Okay, thank you.
No worry. All right, no worries. So I have the inspiration today and I am very happy to be able to do that because there's a lot that has been going on all over around our cities, around our country. And I think inspiring individuals and recognizing that is important. But I do want to first say that today is actually World Health Day. So it's important for us to be healthy. I also want to acknowledge that this is National English Learner Month. That's another great acknowledgement. And this during this time, we usually have a celebration with the county is child abuse awareness. And so we want to just be mindful of those things. But as I said, I want to inspire tonight our heroes and I know the challenges that all of us have faced last week and just a couple of day or just a day ago. So this says, welcome. Welcome to our class. I'm so glad that you're here. Please enjoy this bag of goodies that describes the coming year. The eraser is to let you know it's okay to make mistakes. We will fix them and keep learning no matter what it takes. The smarties say, I know you're smart and really special, too. The lifesavers is a reminder that I'm always here for you. The pencil represents the learning that we're going to do. School can sometimes be hard work, but it's a lot of great fun, too. The starburst is to let you know that you're a star to me. The rest of the second grade will be the best year yet. I'm sure you will agree. And so that inspiration was again to all of our parent heroes, to all of our staff heroes, to everyone that's helping out with this distance learning. We know it's new unfamiliar territory, but again, we want to welcome you back to class so that we're all learning together. Thank you. Now we will move to item 2.1 Resolution in Support of California High School Voter Education Week. And if Ms. Rosales Medina would read that?
I would gladly. Give me one second. So whereas. So this is. This is resolution to support California High School Voter Education Week. Whereas the vote, the right to vote is a fundamental unpinning of democracy, one that must be cherished, practiced and championed as a civic duty. And young people play a critical role in our democracy by helping choose the people who will lead us and by voting their opinions on the issues that are important to them. And whereas California recently announced the availability of an online tool that allows eligible 16-year-olds, 17-year-olds to pre-register to vote and then automatically become active voters once they turn 18. And by reaching out early and often to students, we can help them develop a strong lasting appreciation for the value of voting. Therefore, be resolved that the Board of Education of San Bernardino City by School District declares April 12 through April 25, 2020 as High School Voter Education Week and encourages schools throughout the district to participate in programs and activities that help register and pre-register eligible students to vote while encouraging others to become informed citizens committed to being active voters as they reach voting age.
Second. All right, it's been moved and properly second. Dr. Wyatt.
Yes, Madam President.
Voting? Okay, yes. Mr. Gallo.
Aye.
Dr. Hill.
Aye.
Dr. Flores.
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina.
Aye.
Mr. Tillman.
Aye.
And Gwen, aye. Motion carried. Thank you. As we are getting ready to go into our closed session, I also want to encourage all of those that are watching. We know that there's been a lot of questions coming in on different activities that are taking place. I want to encourage you to go to our website while we're in closed session and get familiarized. You will see things there regarding the class of 2020, regarding technology and as well as a live tour of our distance learning. So I want to encourage you to do that. It also will help you look for how to correct technology issues or how to reach out and get support.
Madam President. Madam President. I had a parent reach out to me tonight. They were having trouble submitting a comment for tonight's meeting.
Okay.
Can you walk them through that?
Okay, so it's on the website. My understanding it's in a couple of places. So let's look at the website. Karen, are you on the line?
Yes, ma'am.
Want to go ahead and review that before we go into closed session?
Okay, let me look at my notes. They can from the district website homepage, there's two places on the front. If they scroll down to where it says Board of Education, they'll see a little button to click on where it says Submit Public Comment. If they scroll a little further to the Calendar and Events section, they can click on the current board meeting and it takes them to the form. Also, they can go through the Board of Education tab at the top of the district website where it's red says Board. They can click there. It'll direct them to the comments on the left-hand side. They can click on it there.
And you're monitoring all these? All of these?
They all come through to one place. So yes, when they fill the form out, it all comes into one central location. Facebook also has a link to the same one. And I think I've covered all of them. There are several places. Just so the public knows, we do cut off public comments at 4:30. That gives staff time to translate if we need to translate and time for me to review them and make sure I can read them and understand them. And that should be all the places.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we will now go into closed session.
And you want us to hang up, right? Push the red button to hang up?
Yes, actually leave the call. So the red button in the middle, hang up completely. Don't leave it on hold. All right.
Good evening. I want to. This is David Chavez. I'm the San Bernardino Unified School District Multi-Media Manager and I would like to, or I would like to help you navigate the new district website. So. We have retooled it to meet everybody's needs on the questions that they have in the recent weeks. And if you would go to sbcusd.com, you'll be shown the main homepage. This homepage, you'll be able to scroll down and see the many resources that we have available to answer the main questions you have in the recent weeks. So if you need any questions, other recent messages that we put out to parents by robocall, simply click on the messages. And we have a full archive, all the various messages available to parents if they have not received any robocalls. We also have a district hotline for all information and updates. Simply dial 909-888-KIDS or 909-888-5437. In this page, we also have various other resources. We recently understand there's other questions when it comes to the class of 2020. So we invite all public to visit this page to see all the recent updates we have regarding our graduating class of 2020. And please. Please note that all these pages are updated daily as information becomes available. We also have childcare resources. Under childcare resources. We have various agencies that can refer to our, to our, to our community, all the various childcare and family child community and childcare. We also have a full list of our meal distribution sites that are currently serving food at the, at these locations. We also have technology resources. We also. We also offer internet resources to our public that if you need internet, if you need internet, we have our partners such as AT&amp;T, Comcast and Spectrum. They offer all these various, all these various options for our public to get free enough free wifi. It would be cheap wifi. And we also want to. Want you to frequently ask questions. We invite the public to also. Visit these various departments that also have. Questions that have been coming to us by the public that are being answered daily. In addition, we also feel that it's, we also know in the district that it's very, very important to, to have, to, to have mental health support. So we always, we always promote the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline at 1-800-273-TALK. In addition, we also asked the public during this time during the COVID-19 pandemic, we asked that if you see any suspicious activity occurring at any of our district, at any of our district sites, please call the number at 909-388-6043. I'd like to thank you for listening, for listening to our demonstration. Thank you.
All right, I think we're waiting on a few others. Okay, there's Dr. Hill, Mr. Tillman. And I think we have enough.
Is unknown back?
Let's see. I don't see. I don't see unknown. But we do have enough board members while he tries to figure it out. Welcome. We're back, everyone. I hope you had a chance to, I think there was maybe a problem with the link, but hopefully you were able to go in and look at our website. All right. And my readout went away. All right, be it resolved that the Board of Education approved settlement agreement CI 1920-06 and the amount of 11,588. The Board of Education authorizes Deborah Love, Director of Purchasing, to sign the related documents. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. We will now do a voice vote. Ms. Rosales Medina.
Aye.
Dr. Hill.
Aye.
Dr. Flores.
Aye.
Mr. Tillman.
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt.
Aye.
And now, Mr. Gallo.
Aye. I still couldn't find out where to type in my name.
And Gwen Rogers, aye. All right. Motion carried. Thank you. We will now conduct a public hearing or opening up. I actually am gabbling my pen. This is. Be it resolved that the Board of Education adopts a memorandum, memorandum of understanding of the coronavirus response between the California School Employees Association and its Chapter 183 and the San Bernardino City Unified School District. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I moved to table it.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second to table. So I will take a voice vote again. Dr. Flores.
Aye.
Mr. Tillman.
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt.
Aye.
Dr. Hill.
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina.
Aye.
Mr. Gallo.
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Thank you. We'll now move to public comments. I believe Karen, you will be assisting and I believe that we have. I think you had said earlier three. I'm not sure how many now.
We have nine public comments.
Okay.
One second. Okay. Excuse me. The first one is from parent Tracy Roach and she commented, when are students getting Chromebooks and hotspots so they can access online learning and they don't fall behind? I've been waiting for Chromebooks and hotspots for my kids since September. Next, we have a parent Mia Cooper. And she wrote, I would like to take this time and tell the Communications Department thank you for keeping us updated on what is going on within the schools. Also, I have just a few questions. One, I would like to receive school packets for the following grades, Kinder, Fourth, Ninth and Tenth Grades. Can they be mailed to me or can I pick them up outside of school? These packets will help with learning throughout the summer. Do not want the kids' brains to slow down and begin to relax in the summertime. Two, when we start the online learning on April 20th, are the students going to be able to have some extra tutoring in the subjects they were behind in? Three, when picking up the meals on Mondays and Wednesdays, do students have to be with you or can a parent pick up the food without them? Thank you for all your hard work and making sure our students and staff and parents are safe. The next one is from Sheena Felix. She is a parent of a student enrolled at a charter school. And she writes, with the district closed, I have not been able to obtain information regarding transfers. Prior to COVID-19, I submitted a request for transfer so my, so my child in a charter could join his sibling at a district school. With everything moving to online learning, this has become even more challenging, having both children attending two different schools with different standards and protocols. What are the next steps for these types of requests? If no one is in the office, are staff telecommuting? Will I still be notified if the transfer was approved? This information should be disseminated to those awaiting responses. I have been in limbo for quite some time now and would like to know next steps, please. I am not sure if this is the correct form, however, I'm unable to reach anyone at this time and need answers. Thank you. The next one comes from a community member, Darcell Kennedy. Students are being told that their grades won't fall below their current standing. This knowledge in effect removes any incentive to engage in any academic pursuits. The concern is that students will fall deeper into the achievement gap. What is being done to motivate students to keep learning? Next one is from Rita Martinez, a parent. I appreciate all the efforts the district has done to help parents and making it possible for us to enroll our kids through your website. The person that assisted me has been so helpful and kind. I would like to suggest that when all this is over, the district finds a way of recognizing these employees. Okay, the next one is from Dr. Elsa Valdez, a community member. And she writes, a 2019 state auditor's report and a study by the ACLU and public advocates found that several school districts, including SBCUSD, is illegally using district LCAP funding for security measures, including school police. I agree with the finding from this report that this, and this is in quotes, robs over a million high need students of tens of millions of dollars that should have been invested in positive student supports, proven to close opportunity gaps and improve school climate for low-income students of color, close quotes. This is shameful and board members need to respond and take corrective measures. The school board should develop a comprehensive plan that shows what action will be taken to correct this misuse of funds. It is crucial that the SBCUSD invests supplemental and concentration funds in evidence-based social emotional resources that support high need students. The recent suicide of a second grader in the SBCUSD calls for swift board action so that this kind of tragedy does not happen again. Okay, my next one is from Sergio Luna, Director of Organizing with Inland Congregations United for Change. Okay. Good evening to all. This comment is in regards to the misuse of LCFF supplemental and concentration funds used for our school district police department and operations. We bring the concern of our community in hopes to work together to make this right, to fulfill LCFF promise to all of our low-income English language learners, African-American students and foster youth, as well as to reach the true intent of resource allocations in our LCAP. We are deeply concerned that the San Bernardino City Unified School District has misused very much needed funding for direct services to students and families and instead uses funding for school district police departments and operations. We strongly believe that funding for police and security should not exceed funding for real school climate reforms, including restorative practices, counselors, school-wide positive behavior interventions and supports, and social emotional learning. ICUC students and parents and families believe that resources need to be dedicated to programs that directly benefit low-income English language learners, African-American students and foster youth and their families. It is during times like these that it becomes evident where we have disinvested heavily when it comes to our students and families. As this report comes out to light, it is both a challenge for community input and LCAP's accountability, but it also becomes an opportunity to fully redirect these mismanaged funds to programs that will have a real impact on these students and families. We currently work with students from across all of the comprehensive high schools here in the district, with parents from 10 different schools and 12 different congregations across the district. We are continuously listening to their concerns and ways they would like to see their schools improve. We believe there are many different ways in which funds could be better used specifically for programs that in the past ICUC has championed along with our school board members, such as increasing mental health professionals, supporting students at every school, social emotional counselors and support staff, creating wellness centers at every school campus, meaningful parent engagement that builds parents' understanding of our educational system, supporting parents and students in advocating for students' education and other ways that address the racial disparities faced by students and their families in our district. We hope that together we can mend the misuse of these funds and find more equitable ways to reinvest these funds into our communities. Okay. The next one is from Lori Cara, a parent. I would like to give some parent input on distance learning. I believe it would benefit all students if teachers would do a teaching video to put in students' Google Classroom versus Skyping students to teach the lesson. Students can always rewind the video to go back and reference versus being live. I believe some students will have a hard time being live during a specified timeframe while living with multiple family members, possibly not having a designated quiet place for learning live and/or taking care of their siblings. Also, if teachers can put another website up for students to look up for more of an understanding, students can always reach out to teachers for more clarification if needed. I did have one question. Are you going to be using your aides to help out RSP teachers? Believe this would benefit IEP students and RSP teachers during this time. Okay. And the last one is from Coach Marrell Lewis. He's a community member. And he said. Talking about all schools closed, but some people already paid for high school prom, grad night, park and graduate cap and gowns. Do you think there will be refunds or reschedule? Thank you. And that is all the public comments.
Thank you, Karen. And I want to say thank you to all that put in a public comment. We really appreciate it because it's giving us some real-time information. Perhaps the district can look at, you know, maybe a Q and A and maybe it's already there on the website so that when these questions are answered or asked, now that we're kind of in this mode, I'm sure there's other people that want to know those answers as well. I know the district will reach out to those individuals with the information that they received today, but I, I'm sure that others want to know that answer as well. So I want to ask the district if they will do that because there's certain information, you know, if it's, it's said during a board meeting, it's like, how do we kind of get it answered? And I know, like we were discussing the last week about our charter schools and they're, they're doing distance learning. I know ASA reached out. They're doing the distance learning. So we want to put information there. We're going to rely on, you know, our electronic possibilities if that, if that's possible, Dr. Volkmer.
Absolutely, Ms. Rogers. We're happy to. Follow up, obviously, with all of the people that have individual questions. We'll make sure that someone from staff gets the answers to them and then we'll continue to look as we were demonstrating today during closed session is my understanding of helping people navigate our webpage with the answers they want.
Right. The most common questions type thing. Thank you. And I believe, did I see a raised hand? Dr. Flores, did you raise your hand on something?
I, yes, I did. I, I thank you. I was going to ask, Madam President, if Dr. Volkmer could, you know, clarify all the comments and the questions for the public. And also, I mean, are you going to follow up with every single comment, Dr. Volkmer?
Yes, Dr. Flores, we'll have, we'll have someone from staff follow up with each and everyone.
Yeah, we, it will still remain the same. So you bring your comments and you, we still reach out to you to give you those questions. But the clarity is, you know, you're giving it to that one person and there's others that probably want to know so we could use our website to make those common questions. All right. And I couldn't, Ms. Rosales Medina, I couldn't tell what that meant. Did you want to ask a question or you were thanking him? No, no comment. Okay. And then you can't, you can't hear us? Okay. And then Mr. Tillman?
Yes. I do want to make it clear, we talked about it at the meeting before last, that the, the parent asked a question. The parent asked a question about refunds. There will be refunds for everything, right? For the prom?
Yes.
For, what else?
All end-of-year activities that students pay for will be refunded.
And how's that going to happen? Do they need to contact somebody, Dr. Mitchell?
No, the schools are working with the IMT. So most of those funds go through their ASB offices, so there are accurate records for who paid what. And so we're finding, the IMT will determine the logistics alongside business services to refund those dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you. So again, those are those reoccurring questions. So as they're put out there on the website, I think people will be able to be directed to get that answer. Thank you. Um, let's see. All right. Okay, now we're going to I don't see it on here, but it probably is, and maybe I'm overlooking it. But I know we have our student board member is on the line. Is she still on the line with us, Ms. Stewart? You will probably be an expert in a lot of areas to kind of share with us what's going on in real time. So please go ahead and make your comments. Can you hear us?
Yes, yes, I can. Hi, everyone.
Hello.
So, well, as you guys know, it's my senior year. It's kind of different. I know we heard the public comments, speaking on behalf of encouraging students to continue learning. And I know that kind of fell short, speaking just from my class in general. I know a lot of my friends are just like, oh, I have Cs or better. Just leave it. And that's kind of been the thought process so far. I mean, that it doesn't really work that. I mean, I guess like, that's true, your grades are going to stay the same, but you know, that's the whole two months of our education just taken. Because they're just, they have the mentality of, I'm still graduating, so what's the point, you know? That's where I would say seniors are at.
All right. Thank you for that. And no, we are definitely working diligently to see how we will transition this and still celebrate you. I didn't know, Eric, you're on there as well. Mr. Morales, would you like to give us comments?
Hi, everybody. I agree with everything. I think it was Kayla that was speaking. And I just want to say I'm so glad to see everyone today and we all seem to be in good health. I know the last few months have been challenging for us all, and I'm just letting everyone know now that I have faith that we will find ourselves at the end of this, all this chaos, happy, healthy, mindful, and above all, stronger than ever. Thank you all. Stay safe and have a good night.
Thank you. And we appreciate you jumping on the line as well. Glad to see you as well. It's been a minute. But we are definitely working on your behalf and any comments that you have for us, we definitely would like to hear. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Did I miss anyone else? Okay. All right, we are now at our reports and comments by our union organization. 7.1 San Bernardino Teachers Association, I believe we have Ms. Alcala will be making a comment. I don't know if she's on the phone or...
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Gwen. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, President Rogers, members of the Board and Cabinet, interim superintendent, Dr. Volkmer. I am Ashley Bidas Alcala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association, and I am speaking to you tonight on behalf of the 3,000 members of SBTA. First, I want to thank the Board for considering the health and safety of our employees and our community last week by making the difficult decision to extend our school closure through the end of the year. And over the past two weeks, we have been meeting with the district to come up with an agreement on the impact of the COVID-19 school closures and its impact on our work. We still have not been able to reach an agreement. We're meeting again tomorrow, and SBTA is hoping for a positive outcome so that our members know what to expect as we prepare to transition to distance learning on April 20th. Last week, during Tuesday's emergency meeting, Dr. Mitchell presented the district's plan as we transitioned to distance learning. I want you to know that SBTA has been included in the five committees that are organized and assigned to provide guidance for this work. And we look forward to continued collaboration with these committees and also the district as we begin to implement distance learning. We are doing everything we can to support our members as they navigate this new reality. And it is our hope as we move forward that we also remember to consider the magnitude of this virus and its effect on our members, students, and their families. We encourage everyone to be patient and understanding as we all learn together in this new environment. So I just want to thank the Board for your support and also for your time this evening.
Thank you. 7.2 California School Employees Association. Is there a representative?
Gwen?
Yes.
This is Karen. They do want to speak, but I don't have them in yet. So give me a second to get him in so he can hear his comment.
Sure.
Give me a second.
I guess at this time we can thank the public again. We're working through this. I think we're doing decent at this tonight with all of our virtual world and hopefully it's coming through clear for you. And again, to our staff, what is this, your second day back after spring break? Taking upon a challenge and we definitely appreciate that. Getting them in. I'm not sure if communication workers are on the line as well.
We come back to them?
Yeah, is communication workers on the line?
No, we'll have nobody else. So I'm just inputting them right now.
Okay. And that would also include the San Bernardino School Police Officers Association, and then we'll be going into our presentation or update on COVID. Okay.
I have sent it to him. We're just waiting for him to accept and get on.
Okay. I see, did a new number come? No.
No, I haven't seen it yet.
Okay, so the next thing is our presentation. I don't want to delay too much, so if we could possibly, you can alert me or let me know. Dr. Volkmer, I want to turn it over to you for the presentation.
Great. Thank you, Madam President. Board, during our special board meeting just last week on March 31st, we spent a lot of time talking about the programming that's involved with our response to the COVID-19 virus. We spent a lot of time talking about meals, educational programming, how we would deliver services to our special education students. But as these plans were being developed, we were also taking a look at how we would measure our effectiveness during this time and what metrics we would use as data sources. And so as I've said, I've said before, probably repeatedly by now, our mission does not change during times of crisis. Only our approach to achieving it. Our mission of having every student graduate college and career-ready is still alive and well. But as you know, we're marshaling resources in different ways and we're redefining what a high-quality looks, a high-quality education looks like, at least temporarily. So tonight, we want to present to you where we're headed in terms of measurable outcomes. And since it's just day two, since we've been back from spring break, we'll have a few metrics to report on. But mostly what you hear, we'll hear about are those types of data sources or data sets that we will be gathering over time to make sure that we're implementing our plans effectively. So the PowerPoint is keyed up, and I want to just draw your attention to that initial slide that says we're doing our part to flatten the curve. Ultimately, our goal is to flatten the curve and help the state get out of this crisis in terms of the coronavirus issue as soon as we possibly can. So we want to, we're using that as our backdrop with everything we do in terms of social distancing, minimizing exposure, and trying to provide service without involving as few employees as we possibly can. So David, if you could move us forward. Tonight's objectives are to update the Board on District Operations in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. You'll hear a little bit about program, a little more about program. But by and large, you'll hear a review of the metrics that the district will use to measure progress as we move forward. Next slide, please. And I just want to remind the Board about our core values. The two guiding principles that we've used throughout all of our work since the beginning, and the beginning was only about a month ago, although it seems longer, have been to ensure that all students have meaningful learning activities, beginning yesterday, actually, and then moving toward distance learning as best we can by April 20th. And then to minimize exposure for staff and students to the COVID-19 virus by keeping interaction to a minimum. So I'm going to turn it over to our various team members now. David, you can go ahead and bounce the slide, and we'll have Linda report first.
Thank you and good evening. On this slide, you can see the various tools our district continues to use to communicate with parents, employees, community, and family members. This is the data that we've collected up and through April 6. And on the next slide, you will see that in addition to those communication tools, we've also sent out letters to the homes of our parents and families. We've also made sure that every letter that we send home is also posted on Peachjar just in case a family does not have access or doesn't receive the letter in the mail. So there are two different ways that a family can receive the letter. And that's the data that we have to present for communications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. The slide you're seeing now is from the California Department of Public Health. And this is the statewide trends of the COVID-19 pandemic. You'll notice on there that we have about 550 cases. It's updated today. We have 40 positive cases in the city of San Bernardino, 21 in the city of Highland. We have 550 positive cases countywide and now at 17 deaths. Statewide, from the numbers that we're receiving throughout the nation and the information that we're gathering, is that we anticipate the estimated peak date of this in the state of California to be on or about April 14. So we're really trying to do our best to minimize activities and keep folks in their homes adhering to the stay-at-home order until we start to see a downward trend in this. Next slide, please. So your incident management team is busy at work. Matter of fact, we are not sure what day it is any longer. We worked all day Saturday and Sunday as we're developing plans for device distribution. That's a heavy lift for our teams, but we believe we're going to be very successful. We're hearing positive things from our team members. We have about 35,000 devices that are going to need to be accounted for, cleaned, repurposed, and repositioned throughout the school district to allow for that delivery. We're also working on additional funding in following both state, federal, FEMA and grant opportunities so that we can capture all of our dollars in the response and recovery. And we're safely coordinating the activities of about 400 essential employees daily. So we have about 400 employees that are working inside the school district daily, from our police department to our maintenance and operations, small cadre, you'll hear of them in a little bit, our food services department. And we're also filling about 150 requests a day internally and externally through our incident management team, whether it's staff with questions, comments, concerns, or community members with questions, comments, concerns. It's about our daily average right now is about 150 emails that we're ciphering through. So that's an update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to give you an update on our information technology. Kudos to the Board for the work they've done over the last several years in deploying Chromebooks and hotspots to our students. We have already about 17,000 hotspots that have been deployed over the last several years. The usage is low, but that was prior to the situation that we're in now. So we'll know more over the next couple of weeks, watching that usage and providing that data to you. As you can imagine, there's a national shortage of computers, hotspots, and there is a challenge of connectivity as all districts move to distance learning. We have some hotspots on order should arrive around April 30 and ready to order additional 2,000. Mr. Mike II has applied for the Google hotspot donation. Rural districts are prioritized, but he wanted to get in the queue in case there's any extra availability from Google. And then I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bardier to talk about how we're surveying families to really hone in on the students that do not have connectivity.
And before you do that, Mr. Tillman, was there a question from Ms. Christakis?
Yes, Ms. Christakis. As soon as possible, can you give us a number in terms of how many computers are being taken out of the classroom? I just want to make sure that we immediately put in an order to purchase that many devices to ensure that when we do start school again, that those devices are here and set up in those classrooms. I think the worst thing we could do is is go through this process and then not have computers in the classrooms when they start back at regular school.
Yes, so the incident management team, Eric talked a little bit about it earlier. They will, they are tracking all of that. They're doing a great job deploying computers to sites that need it, and so they have a record of all of that.
Great. I just want to make sure our running status on that. Thank you very much.
Dr. Flores, was your question for Ms. Christakis as well?
It's for both Ms. Christakis and Eric Vitri. I just wanted to thank you, Eric, and all your team for working overtime. You worked on Saturdays and Sundays. And it's a big lift to get all those computers. Go get them. And besides getting them, you have to like upload them, check to see if they're working. And how many did you guys actually upgrade or get ready?
Dr. Flores, it's still a work in progress throughout this week, but we're anticipating touching about 30,000 devices by the end of this.
Wow, that's a lot. And how big is your team?
Well, we're using folks at the school sites as well, so we're deploying small teams to school sites, and then we're providing regional support at the district level for schools that may not have specialties.
So my question to you is 30,000 going to be enough? Is that going to be enough for our kids?
Yeah, we do believe that the number of devices we have within the school district is going to meet the current need.
So I'm thinking about the mother that that sent in a comment. So one device per family probably won't be enough if you have four kids. And each of the kids is going to have to, you know, use the computer. So do we have? Are we going to give each child a computer or is it just going to be one per family? Have we decided that?
Yes, each child will receive a computer. As an example, we had a couple of schools that are ahead of us and were able to get devices distributed this week, and they brought that to us. They had a family that showed up with four students from various schools and said, can we just get our devices here? And we said, absolutely. You're here now, we'll give you the devices that we have here now. So we also want to make sure that we meet that need and that we're not sending families throughout the school district to get the devices that can pick them up.
So that prompts me to ask you, is there going to be a central place to pick them up or are we going to deliver them or what are we going to do? Or multiple ways?
So our first phase next week will be at each school site. And we'll try to get out as many as we can at that point. And then following that, we're looking to regionalize where we can get them out at smaller locations so we don't have to keep every school staffed.
So are teachers going to be helping us in terms of determining which children? which children have devices and which ones don't?
Actually, that segues right into what Ms. Bardier was getting ready to touch on.
Okay.
Okay. If I may, I'll go ahead and share the work that the communications department has done in partnership with our information technology team. This afternoon, about 3:30, we sent out a robo-call to all families asking them if they are in need of either a device or internet access to take a brief survey. And from that survey, we already have close to 4,000 families that have indicated either need devices or internet access. And to Dr. Flores's point, one of the questions actually asked the families to identify how many children in the home need a computer. Then they could simply push on their keypad of their phone, two or whatever that number is, or zero, if the family already has enough devices. So that data collected today and then passed on to IT so they can cross-check the responses from that survey to see which schools those students attend. And then they will work collaboratively with the school site and our IMT team to make sure that those students get their devices and the families get internet access. Thank you.
So thank you. I'm assuming that you also sent out the robo-call in Spanish and that Spanish-speaking parents are also getting this. But, and, and you said you sent out letters too for parents that don't have, you know, phones or, you know, cell numbers, et cetera, correct?
Yes, so we're trying as many different strategies as we can. We do it in English and Spanish. And we are now working with English learners to send those same letters to students who speak languages other than English or Spanish so that we hit all segments of our student population so that we can have 100% of our students engaged in distance learning.
So then my next question is, because I'm a novice at technology, are we going to also have ways of showing them how to use Google Classroom or any of the programs that we have? I mean, I don't even know how you do it because you contacted me and then I had tutoring and I was able to then, you know, figure out how to do stuff. But, I mean, it's taken me like four sessions, you know, and still I'm asking questions. So are we going to have our, our parents and children also? I know some, I know some will be able to do it, but others who've, who've never had a device, you know, to themselves or never used the programs that we're going to use. That's one question. And then the next question is, is everybody going to use Google Classroom? That's the second question.
Yes, I know that Google Classrooms is the platform that the district is going with. And Dr. Mitchell's team has done an exceptional job developing all of the support tools and training videos and so many different ways to help not only families, but also teachers and administrators get up to speed with this new technology.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Thanks. Okay, that's it. Thank you very much.
Who's next? Up next? And Dr. Mitchell, they're definitely answering these questions in real time that our families will get training and resources in Google Classroom solely for the district, distance learning. So great on that. And I believe Mr. Vartier also said those that need them will get them. So thank you. Who's up next?
That's back to me. So all, you should have received two BCS, one on facilities, one on maintenance and operations with a lot more detail than this slide is providing. But basically, all non-critical projects will be delayed until June or beyond. And plans for staff working safely were provided and are monitored by the IMT. So for maintenance and operations, we want to ensure that critical building systems and asset maintenance, excuse me, maintenance will commence on April 13. We want to ensure that our building systems are maintained and, and we have, you know, cleaning up graffiti and some other things that we want to make sure happens. We have, we'll have about 48 staff members work at various district sites. They'll be on staggered start times, our grounds team. And then we already have a re-entry plan. Once the district determines a date for general occupancy, it'll take about two weeks. Same with our facilities, planning and development. They have a plan to complete the current capital improvement projects. And there will be oversight of four staff members. And so you have a list of those projects in the BC that was provided.
Okay. I believe Ms. Christakis, Mr. Tillman, you have a question on that slide? Are you mute? On mute?
I was, but actually it was on a previous slide. I just want to encourage everyone to understand that if you're putting out this many devices, and to Dr. Flores's point, this is a huge learning curve for a lot of people. So when I, when I make the statement that I think we should be real patient about what our expectations are for teachers and students and parents is because that's the reality. That's not something, I'm not, I'm not trying to go easy on people. I, I still hold education as a priority. But I don't think that in this short period of time that we should have expectations of doing things that, a regular educational curriculum that we would have the same type of goals and deadlines and and, and, and onus on our students. Because it's, the reality is a lot of people are going to be learning something brand new for the first time. There's no way of getting around that. We're going to do, and I love the fact that the team has worked together and Dr. Mitchell has a curriculum that's going to be presented so that it gives our students an opportunity to continue to learn. And I think this is the wrong, the one time the student board member said, you know, what is it? Some, some students say, I already have passing grades, so I'm not going to worry about learning anything else. This is the perfect time to realize that you are in competition with people in districts next to you, next to you throughout the state and throughout the country and throughout the world. So if you really want to compete with other people, you should be incentivized to do everything you can to learn as much as you can. And as soon as you figure it out, the better off you're going to be, especially if you're a senior in high school. You should take every advantage you can to learn the most you can this next month. A lot of this distant learning will prepare you for what you're going to learn and how you're going to learn in college. So I just want to thank the district staff for doing so much work to put this together. But I want to be realistic about it. I, I've been doing technology for a long time. And I can tell you the learning curve is going to be different for a lot of different people. The parents, the grandparents, and the students. This is, this is, this is going to be a heavy load for people who are familiar with technology. And we actually have households right now that do not have any internet presence and do not have any computer. That's a big step to go from having nothing to all of a sudden having to conduct class in your home. So I just want everybody to be patient and, and realize this is brand new to everybody. We're going to do the best we can and we're all in this together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Christakis, do you want to continue?
Yes, thank you. We're continuing. We talked last week about the regional meal distribution that will be provided twice a week, giving each child with a breakfast and lunch from Monday through Friday. So then that's the 10 meals over the course of the week. Our most vulnerable learners to receive the same meals via direct delivery. I do want to say the name of the sites. We added one since last week. So we will be serving at Alessandro Elementary, Holcomb Elementary, Muskoy Elementary, Riley Elementary, Del Vallejo Middle School, Pacific High School, and we added San Andreas High School. So yesterday, we averaged 5,322 meals plus 682 meals that were delivered to our most vulnerable students. So the total meals distributed on Monday for Monday and Tuesday was over 12,000. And we heard the board's concern. And what we have done is set up a meals hotline so that parents and community can comment on the meal distribution program. This went live yesterday and we tested it out. Nutrition Services returned the call right away. But as of for this afternoon, we did not have any calls or comments.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, let me talk about human resources and some of our metrics. In terms of negotiations, we, we had a tenant agreement with CSCE. Obviously, that has been tabled by the board tonight. Communication Workers of America, our first meeting with them will be on Thursday. With the Police Officers Association, we have had two meetings. We have a third scheduled for next week. And as Ashley mentioned, with the Teachers Association, we have our fifth meeting scheduled for tomorrow. Next slide, please. Also, the HR department will be working with all sites and departments in terms of utilization of employees. We have a lot of employees who are working remotely. We have some that are actually at the sites, depending on the day. So we will be working with those sites to see what other job responsibilities and contacting parents, working with students, also training opportunities. And we, I'll have a report to our cabinet on that on Friday and then report back to the board on April 21st.
Thank you.
I'm up. Good evening, board. So the special ed department has been working diligently to make sure that we are meeting the state and federal legal mandates to the greatest extent possible. So this means the district has to make an honest effort to provide services and meet legal requirements outlined in the Individuals with Disabilities Act, IDEA, again, to the greatest extent possible. And so the special ed department has, is designing and has designed some systems, beginning with the Special Education Compliance Calendering Plan. I mentioned this last week. As of today, 81 participants attended the first training. That was last week. We, the rest of the participants attended today. And so all of our principals and assistant principals have been trained on this calendaring plan so that they can start planning for remote IEPs, and I'll talk about that briefly. We have also provided guidance to our charter school operators so they receive the same training on compliance calendaring. As you know, they are their own LEA, but as their Sopa, we are supporting them in how they can meet their compliance requirements. And just so the board, just as a reminder, this compliance is a shared responsibility between our special education department, compliance team, and the site special ed IEP teams. And so both are working collaboratively to make sure that we can start to offer some remote IEPs, which takes me to my second bullet. So effective tomorrow through May 1st, the IEP teams at the school sites are to be developing their plan for how they will, they will schedule remote IEPs that will take place shortly. And while they're doing that, the special education department is developing the infrastructure behind these IEPs. So infrastructure includes things like, but is not limited to, how do we ensure confidentiality during these remote IEPs? How do we secure signature pages? What might the, how do we ensure that the goals are being met? All of that needs to be done. The special ed department is working on that. We actually spent two hours today planning out what this infrastructure would look like. And the guidance is somewhat happening from the state, but Dr. Lundie is in frequent communication with other Sopa directors throughout the state to gather best practices because everybody has different ways that they're doing it and some have been doing remote IEPs for some time. So that's happening starting tomorrow through May 1st. IEP teams at the schools will be reaching out to their families to start scheduling these remote IEPs. And when they reach out, they will be asking the families which method they prefer. Do they prefer a virtual IEP or do they prefer a phone IEP? And then the IEP teams will meet that need based on what the parent need is. In addition to some of the infrastructure, as you can imagine, there is a lot of interpretation services that are going to have to get coordinated. And so the special ed department is creating a protocol to share with the site teams so that they can hold these remote IEPs. So a lot of work behind the scenes so that when we are ready to move forward with remote IEPs, which will be effective May 4th through the last day of school, the teams have the supports and the systems in place so that they can offer the most effective IEPs possible. We are truly going slow to go fast. We don't want to set our, our teams up to hold IEPs that are not effective, that are not in alignment with state and federal mandates. So we want to make sure all those systems are in place and then we can start holding these IEPs again. The team is, has given direction to schools to focus on any IEPs that need to take place effective March 13th through the end of the school year. So effective when school closures took place until June 4th. That's the priority. And within that, the team has given the schools priorities within their own IEPs. So for instance, our graduating seniors are a higher priority to complete their IEPs than a student who is completing an initial. Doesn't mean that one is more important than the other. We have a timeline that we need to meet. So they have given that direction to our schools. So again, they're going slow to go fast, but the goal is to be able to start holding remote IEPs effective May 4th. And families can expect that teams will start reaching out to them in the next week or so as these team, as the school teams get their calendaring done. Next slide, please. So the metrics that we're looking at for the special ed department that I will be sharing in the future, the first one is around these remote IEPs. How many actual IEPs were completed by phone? And I won't be able to share that until we, we start that in May. And then how many were completed virtually? I think that would be interesting information to share with the board and really give an indication of where our families are and our teams in terms of their ability to do the, the virtual IEPs. The other metrics that we're, that I can share, last board meeting, we started and we committed to phone calls, robo-calls to our special ed parents every Wednesday. That first set went out last Wednesday and 6,387 calls were received by our special ed parents. So that's a very good return rate on that. And then finally, Ms. Christakis already spoke about the meal distribution. Just a reminder, when we talk about our most vulnerable students, we're talking about our medically fragile and severely handicapped students and the same number of meal distributions that they receive food through direct delivery. And that is the update for our special education department.
Thank you. Ms. Rosales Medina, was your question on this area? No?
No, it wasn't. It was actually looking at with regards to the other slides, but I can wait till the end because I'm trying to accumulate all my questions in one.
Okay, got you. And I think, Dr. Wyatt, you typed something out. Did your question get answered?
No, Madam President, I don't think I heard it. Two things on my questions, and I see, I am seeing some responses there. One, the technology our teaching staff have at home, are they equipped with the appropriate level of technology? Or what's the word I'm looking for? The modern devices that can handle what we're doing right now, such as, you know, video telepresence meetings. And then two, electronic signatures. I see we're going to be doing our IEP meetings by phone or virtually, which I think is a great idea right now. But to lower the transmission of paperwork from person to person, will we be able to use electronic signatures?
So Dr. Wyatt, I'll respond to your question around the electronic signatures. We, that is part, that's part of that infrastructure that the team is investigating right now. We don't have an answer yet. There's a couple of options out there. But the goal is to find the option that is, maintains confidentiality, minimizes paper, and, and still gets the need met, which is to have our parents sign that they approve of whatever that IEP is. We are aware of some Sopas that do use electronic signature and it's, I think it's called DocuSign. I know I've used it for loans. And so that may be the route, but it, we're not, we haven't landed completely as to what would work best for San Bernardino City.
Yeah, I'm familiar with DocuSign as well. I was just wondering if that's legally acceptable and binding, you know, if we were to look at a reprocess or legally defensible IEP. So thank you.
You're welcome. And anything that we're bringing in, our vetting through our legal, just to make sure.
Fantastic. Appreciate it.
And Dr. Wyatt, this is Tom Halderson. In terms of the, yeah, in terms of the teachers and your question, we actually do have a few teachers, less than five, that live in remote areas of the mountains where they do. where they do not, their internet connection is very poor. So we'll be working with Ashley on that. We have some ideas of how those teachers can still perform the tasks, but they won't be able to do it at their home.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Fantastic answers. Appreciate you both.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, thank you. Rachel, I've heard from several families that really appreciated the personal touch and reach out by your teachers. So the feedback's very, very positive.
Thank you, Mike. The teachers care a lot about their kids, and so, you know, in this difficult time, they miss them as much as everybody else does.
You bet. And it's so much importance, you know, for our student base as well. You know, having these positive adult relationships are critical.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. Next up is that? Dr. Perez?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Board. It's my pleasure to provide an update related to the work of the Student Services Division. The update tonight will specifically address childcare, bullying, as well as physical and mental health services. I will provide an overview of each topic along with our team's approach for supporting and meeting the needs of our students and families. And then I'll move into sharing related data. So we'll get started with childcare. The Family Engagement Team, along with the support of the other Student Services Departments, have created a resource for families that outlines the various options available for childcare within our immediate community, as well as providing information for childcare referral agencies that serve our region. This information has been shared with families via our district's webpage and social media outlets. Our communications team has also supported spreading the word via robocall to all our S B C U S D families. As we transition into the distance learning environment, we realize that there's still a need to address the safety and well-being of our students. And we are adjusting our approach to matching the need. I'd like to reassure our school community that we'll continue to operate our bully intervention system. The use of the Q R code will still be used to report bullying incidents, and we will be communicating and publishing reminders regularly to keep this information accessible. This brings me to the final topic of physical and mental health. Our Swiss team, in conjunction with a variety of community partners, have outlined an approach to meeting the physical and mental health needs of our students and families via a virtual platform. Needless to say, the team has been busy collaborating and innovating around how to best meet the needs of our community. They have collectively had interaction with over eight hundred students and families regarding topics ranging from the requests for student records to supporting families of our foster and homeless students, to walking parents through the instructional resources. For the next couple of slides, we'll provide preliminary numbers related to data that we will continue to track throughout the course of our school closure. Next slide, please. So we're sharing information related to childcare data. And at the last board meeting, I heard the request and concern from our board around how many spaces are available within the local agencies. So we'll keep reporting this data each and every board meeting. So the information you see before you is as of yesterday. Spaces available within the handful of local agencies is three hundred and seventy-seven. We currently had six families requesting services. And at this point, zero families using the services, because we've just made those connections for them to the appropriate agencies that can best meet their need. And I know that there was some question and concern around providing support and guidance for families with relationship to how they will afford these services. And we are working alongside families diligently to ensure that we're connecting them with the appropriate childcare facilities that will be able to meet their need on the financial end as well. The second piece of data that you see there before you, again, this is all, we're seeing lots of zeros at this point, because we just deployed as of yesterday. So our bullying data, we don't have any cases that have been reported yet. But I do want to reassure the board that obviously there were cases that we were still working before spring break took place. We're picking those cases back up and using those, you know, through the virtual platform, and getting ourselves comfortable and familiar with how to navigate that, and ensuring that the students who had open cases prior to us leaving for spring break are not being neglected. We have folks contacting them both yesterday and today to get things rolling again. And we'll continue to provide updates to our board with relationship to that support for our student. Next slide, please. So this slide is provided as an outline of our process for physical and mental health service referrals, just so that our community and board can see that we have a process in place and what that looks like. So as teachers and/or administrators interact with students and become aware of a need, the referral can be made to the school counselor. The school counselor will provide support to address the need or refer to the wellness team. That is part of the Student Wellness and Support Services Department within Student Services. The wellness team will evaluate the need and refer to appropriate service provider, like Hazel Health for strictly health referrals, Victor Community for mental health supports, or I E H P Navigator and Uplift Family Services, which provide a variety of supports. So based on the family's need, the wellness team will determine who the family gets referred out to. The next slide provides data related to referrals prior to COVID, and we will continue to track this data moving forward. So if we can see the next slide, please. So we outlined the type of support and the number of referrals that we had pre-COVID. This is important, because we want to see if there's an uptick. Do we need to adjust our approach and response based on the number of referrals we start to see? So we have our counseling service referrals, and it gives you an outline of when and how those supports would be deployed. You see the wellness team. That is actually a team that we have repurposed in this school closure time. We took the work that they were typically doing and have repurposed that so that they're the primary team, looking at all referrals coming from counselors to say, okay, who can we best connect our families and students with? So that is the type of work that's going to be required during this time. You know, folks, there's plenty of work to definitely go around. It's just about repurposing and matching people's skill set with the need. We also have Hazel Health, as well as I E H P, and Uplift, who will help us with the physical and mental health services. And so as you can see, we have a lot of partners who have stepped up and come to the table to help us during this time. And you can see the preliminary numbers there, pre-COVID, and what our services were looking like, and those referred, those receiving service, and those completed. And again, we'll continue to provide that data as we progress through this school closure. That is the information that I have for the board this evening. For a time.
Okay, this is Keenan Mitchell. Have the next session. David, if you can release the screen. Board, I'm going to take control of the screen to show you a whole lot of great resources that the teams have created. So give me one second to get set up. So, Board, before I begin tonight, so tonight, I want to update the board on our distance learning plans. And so before I begin, just want to respond to a couple of things I heard the board say tonight, just to reassure you. So number one, I want to echo the sentiment that our S B T A president, Ashley Betis Alcala, has been saying all week, since this time has started, is that she really wants us to be reasonable and flexible with our staff and students and parents. And we agree wholeheartedly with that, that this is a completely new dynamic that we're in, and going slow and being reasonable is what we're asking our leaders to do with teachers as we engage this work. And so we are honoring that. And number two, in response to Mr. Tillman's request, that we be patient with our students, staff, and parents in this transition to distance learning. And I want to let you know, we hear you loud and clear on that, and we agree wholeheartedly with you. And you'll note that our work will be representative of that, once you see it tonight. And lastly, I just want to reassure the entire board, who you all have expressed in one way or another, for us to consider the very diverse needs of our district as we do this work, and to ensure equity and access to our plans going forward, no matter how we get that done. And I want to let you know that we've never engaged in such a collaborative work model with all of our stakeholders across our entire district, employing all the voices that we can to create the best systems possible. And so we're really proud of what we're doing. And more importantly, the experiential outcomes that we're experiencing right now, learning how to work together, learning how to work cross-functionally, getting voices in our system from top to bottom has really aided us in developing a really rockstar plan that we have here. And so just wanted to reassure the board that we are hearing you and we are following suit. So we'll get started here. Okay. So I just want to remind the board briefly of our implementation timeline. As you remember, last week and the week before during spring break, we developed five work groups to develop key systems to implement distance learning. Want to remind you that we're in the second day of our two-week period where these four bullets are happening now, meaning that we're providing learning activities to students for the next two weeks for enrichment, and also give us time to pull the distance learning pieces together. And so those are being provided to students now or through the mail, and you've heard many reports on that. During this time, concurrently, we are providing professional learning and training for teachers on a Google Classroom interface, as well as scope and sequence and curriculum guides to help teachers plan their lessons and build their classrooms. At the same time, to Eric's report, we are in the works of distributing devices, as he said, more than thirty thousand. We've established student emails, and we're working to ensure internet access, as you heard from Ms. Bardier in her robocall, that we're already getting some great data on right now. And then also wanted to reassure you that we did have a team build some resources and supports to parents to familiarize them with the platform, to walk them through how to access the platform. And those efforts will continue to grow and morph to meet the needs of this community. And it is our intention to go live with Google Classroom April twentieth. Next, I just wanted to remind you that we created five work groups to provide deep analysis, research, and guidance on key systems to support our shift to the district-wide use of Google Classroom. The work groups are comprised of district union and school leaders, as you heard Ms. Betis Alcala say. Teachers were involved, as well as certificated and classified support staff representing all divisions. As I said earlier, we have just really experienced all hands on deck, all voices matter dynamic here in developing this new distance learning model. And so as we developed the five work groups that you see here, the first one is on professional learning and training. And that was to address the deep need and immediate need to train our teachers on both the Google Classroom interface, as well as how to build classrooms on it, and then also how to interact with students. Number two is around scope and sequence, meaning what are we expecting teachers to teach in terms of the state common core? Our curriculum guidance, really what that is, or supports the teachers to give them resources. We reviewed our current curriculum guides to ensure that we are using digital access and digital resources to support teachers' teaching. Differentiation really speaks to supporting our E L Ls and our students receiving special education services. And then we're also looking at teacher support in terms of helping teachers design their classrooms, helping schools determine when they'll teach this, what subject, helping teachers degrade to plan as grade levels, subject areas, and so on and so forth. Number three is a biggie around how do we do grading? We've established, just as a reminder, I want to rehash last board members, but last board meeting, but just want to say for the community that kids cannot be harmed by doing this work on distance learning, that you can only grow your grade, and your grade will not be harmed. And we're also looking at assessments, student feedback, and parent engagement. I'll go through that a little bit later today. Number four, devices, internet, and remote troubleshooting. You've heard a lot about that tonight. You've had a lot of questions around that. Things that Eric and Ms. Bardier was able to answer much of that. And then, again, as you heard Ms. Menar- Dr. Menarri speak of in related to students on I E P, that our high school seniors are most vulnerable in this time right now, given that they're just short of exiting our system. So we wanted to make sure that we put a special lens on this group to make sure that we take care of them as well as we can. And so we just chose a couple of things that we've heard from you in terms of what you've asked for. And so there's a lot that we can show you, but we've chosen to show you just a couple pieces from the professional learning courses. These courses started yesterday, and we had such a response from teachers that the registration system shut down for a couple hours, and staff had to address that. So we want to show you what teachers are actually registering for. I want to give you a sense of the scope and sequence and curriculum guide that we created to help teachers plan their days. And then want to give you a sense for what we're, what resources that we are providing for parents. And so I appreciate Dr. Flores's question around what resources are we using? And so let me jump right in. This video is about two or three minutes, and just want to share with the board.
Welcome to the San Bernardino City Unified School District's Distance Learning How-To Hub. This course is designed to give you resources, training options, and quick reference guides as you take your classroom digital, providing continuity of learning for all students during the school closure. Your first stop is this landing page, where you will select a button based on your role. Educators will click here. The page is set up in sections that focus on different areas. This top section contains best practices for successful online teaching, as well as the S B C U S D Distance Learning Interaction Guidelines, best practices for online meetings with students, and evidence-based articles on distance learning. Below, you will find the resources for Google Classroom, Google Hangouts Meet, G Suite tools, and additional tools for distance learning. In the Google Classroom section, you can sign up for a live webinar with our district training team. The webinars will provide an opportunity for you to build your Google Classroom along the way. The first webinar will be Google Classroom One, focusing on the creation of your classroom, adding students and staff, announcements, and classwork. The Google Classroom Two webinar focuses on creating assignments, student feedback, the grades page, and parent participation. All educators who complete the live webinar training will receive certification of Google Classroom readiness. You can also sign up for a live support session, access on-your-own-training videos from the Google Classroom series, or view screencasts from district demonstration teachers' own Google Classrooms. Implementation guides are also available to support your work. They provide step-by-step guidance for creating a successful Google Classroom. And if you need a quick reference guide for a specific task, just click here. Counselors, please refer to your level-specific Google Classrooms with resources provided by Student Wellness and Support Services. As part of the distance learning toolbox, find resources on the live video conferencing tool, Google Hangouts Meet. Explore the applications in the G Suite, the Drive, Docs, Slides, Forms, and Sheets. These apps are the working pieces of the Google environment. The Additional Tools for Distance Learning section includes resources for Screencastify, a tool you can use to create short video lessons to post for your class to watch, and information on two accessibility features students can use as they work digitally. Join the Don Johnston Live Webinar Training to learn how students can use these tools. We look forward to working with you as we move into distance learning and keeping our students engaged in learning through the COVID-nineteenth school closure.
So you can see, Board, very interactive piece around our distance learning.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ashley Ortiz. I work at Curtis Middle School as a special education demonstration teacher. Today, I'm going to show you how I set up my Google Classroom using a secondary.
Sorry about that. So next, I want to show you briefly what our. Sorry about that. So next I want to show you briefly what our elementary, what our scope and sequences look like. Again, the scope is the purpose of the scope and sequence is to really um identify where we should start teaching. What uh what are we what what are we uh looking for in terms of the common core on what focuses for the teaching and so on and so forth. And so you'll see here that what we've created here are easy one-stop places to go to see. Three weeks worth of teaching here. And you can see it's by standard and teachers just click on these kinds of things and they'll see. Uh various resources. Take some mice who like this is this this is the standards that we taught. And teachers can go here and see various resources and planning and re- and um things they could use in their classrooms. Okay, and then let me show you a secondary one. So this is what you would see in a sixth grade classwork. And as you can see, the scope and sequence here. And for example, this is what a teacher would see in terms of. Uh what to teach when and so on and so forth, the different units of study. And all this stuff is at the teacher's finger fingertips. And lastly, board, I wanted to share with you. A parent website that we have put together that will go live uh probably early this week. But this is for our families. Resources for parents. I want to make it clear that. These resources are outside of our scope and sequence or outside of the state standards. These are extra uh enrichment activities and supports that parents and students can use, weekends after hours and so on and so forth. You see, we have a message for parents. We have the links that that parents need to go to, like the Google Classroom, then go straight in there. Clever as well as Aries, our Aries portal. And then all of the the G Suite um resources. And these are the learning resources for parents and students. I'll click on that. You can see here that we've identified different grade spans that parents could could click on. I'll click on to grades K to two. And you'll see it has different subjects, including Spanish, Language Arts, English, Science, Social Studies, and Special Ed. I wanted to highlight particularly the Special Ed one um to show the access that we've created. And you can see the special resources that parents can click on as well as very targeted. Um kinds of disabilities that that parents could could click on and get some extra resources as well. So you can see this is a very robust site, has a lot of a lot of resources in it. And and along with this, parents can also view on how they can log on and get resources and troubleshoot things as well. Okay, what I want to show the board now are the actual training schedules that that teachers are. Are signing up for right now. You can see this is the current two weeks that we're in. And we're asking teachers to uh complete Googles, Google Classrooms One and Two. If they're not familiar, if they're not currently running a Google Classroom, and you can see uh there's limited seats and we. Are getting a huge sign up right now, and that's happening right now. Um you'll also see our demo teachers that are currently using. Uh Google Classrooms have offered their services to do much more in-depth training, more like office hours is what we're calling it. And you'll see that in the green, we have um elementary school. Uh middle school, high school, so teachers can go on to their various levels and get a little bit more. Um in-depth training on very particular areas that are that our demo teachers are providing right now. Also wanted to show you um that we've created a training particularly for our special education student or teachers. So our special education teachers will need to go through the Google Classroom One and Two as well as uh these trainings that are specific. Uh to to uh to their teaching. Okay. Lastly, this will be the data that we'll share with you ongoing. Um the chart below provides data on evaluation measures for the classes taught April seventh. So this was just for yesterday. We had a hundred ninety-six of um participants in Google One, one hundred twenty-nine of them completed evaluations. And on a scale of one to four, these are some of the evaluation metrics that have come out for yesterday. And then you'll see with Google Two, we had ninety-six go through yesterday, sixty-seven did evaluations. With this level of scale that they chose or on the evaluation. We estimate that by Friday, we'll have trained eleven hundred teachers. On on Google One and nine hundred in Google Two. And uh today, we had. Oh, let me just show you this data here. Let me real quick, get out of this for a second. Today's numbers. We had a hundred and forty-five trained for Google One, would bring us to a two-day total of three hundred and forty-one. And we had um a hundred eighty trained in Google Two, bringing us to a two-day total of two hundred seventy-six teachers being trained today. And so that um that is the metric that we'll provide for you as we continue to go through this. And uh we we know that there will be various levels of teacher comfort as relates to to this transition. And as I started with, we're 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 going to be uh reasonable and flexible. Uh we're going to be patient with our learners and we're going to have a keen eye for access and equity. Across the district. And we know that there'll be some places that will miss, hit and miss. Uh but we are committed as a team to doing the very best that we can to make sure that. Uh every student has what they need to be successful and every teacher and staff has what they need to be successful as well. So with that, that closes my report. Thank you. Oh, one more thing. I apologize. Um we also had a level of work with our high school seniors. So we're hearing a lot of concern, of course, for our seniors. And we know that um when we close schools down on March thirteenth, that we have a variety of si- uh we have a. Number of seniors who may have been credit deficient. And so uh in 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 collaboration between Educational Services and Student Services. These are the activities that we'll do to assist our seniors or to prioritize our seniors to ensure. Uh that they're able to graduate this June. And so schools will reach out to seniors that are in need of that are in need of credits. And then sites will um review their current policies and adapt them to best meet the needs of our seniors. Our credit recovery teachers will continue to monitor senior progress and encourage students to complete their credit recovery courses, which they'll be doing online. Um and then submit those credit credit uh recovery forms to the registrar uh once the course has been completed. Our counselors will evaluate senior transcripts for credit recovery needs and place the students into the necessary coursework. Uh they'll reach out to individual students to provide inju- additional support. And then with their current uh teachers, they'll reach out to seniors and encourage them to complete current and missing assignments to raise their final grade. So even with even our current teachers can help kids uh raise their grade before they have to make it up to a credit recovery. And then lastly, our site registrars will post credit recovery grades to student transcripts. And with that, that closes my uh report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Okay, um Ms. I think it was Rosales Medina and then Dr. For- Floret.
Okay, yes, thank you, Madam President. Um so first of all, thank you for the presentation. It was really good information. I do want to ask because um as many of maybe the fellow board members receive calls and messages. Um from the community, from teachers, from parents and students. So one of the questions was regarding the lunch and um this would have to go back to the the presentation regarding food um for our students. And there has been a few um complaints of parents or students that are not. Able to receive food close to where they um live, uh many that do not have transportation, many that um are actually on their last. Um you know, a few meals uh for the week. And um are, you know, in in some cases has been really emotional of how they were describing. Um you know, how frustrated they are that they're not able to go get the meals. So I was looking at what other suggestions could we we help provide to ensure that those uh families that are in dire need. Um still have access to food. I know that the whole point of narrowing down the amount of school sites was so that way we don't pose. A risk factor to um the volunteers, to the employees. Um so then what can we do? And and I was just thinking if there was a possibility of even having for those school sites that are not. Um those five that we're offering currently right now. Um if there is a way we can have them maybe register, pre-register for for food. At certain sites, that way we can know where where is the need at. Um and maybe just go at a specific time, not having it open like the other school sites, but just. Literally going and dropping off the food, making sure that the families were there. Is that a possibility? And I'm just posing that to the department to look at what we can do to really address the issue of those families that are. Um struggling to to eat, the children that are not able to eat.
Um Ms. Rosales Medina, I'll 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 go ahead and answer that. Uh anything is possible. This is our program. Um we can, we can adjust it as we need to. I think the the um most beneficial thing that you can do or any of our board members can do is when they hear of a family member. Get us their name and number so we know. We we've done our best to um regionalize the food distribution, but we we know that that may not work for everybody. If you can get us a a specific family and and a number to reach out to them, we can gather that data and say. We might have, you know, put too much resource in one area of town and another area, uh not enough resource in a separate area of town. That's the the best data that we can have. The more specific you can be, the more helpful we can be. Um and then as we start to gather that data and we look at it through across the district, we can adjust the program uh as as necessary.
Is there a way where um i- is there a number for someone to call if there's a a need? Because it shouldn't be just where they're able to reach out to a school board member. Um it could be through a teacher, somewhat maybe a teacher knows of someone or a principal knows of someone. Um is there a number that we can designate specifically for those um when it comes to those resources such as childcare, food, and so forth?
So um. Yes, we have a hotline. Um and I think um Mr. Beter posted it inside of the chat. We also had it on the slide. And I know Mrs. Um Bardir is pushing that out as well.
That number is nine oh nine, three eight one, one, two, two, four. But it is posted and we're sharing that on social media. And there is um the mechanism it takes is to record a message and then a live person from nutrition services. Will follow up with whoever has left a message.
Thank you for that um clarification, um so that way families can know. Um when and also regarding the high school, I know that there was a great presentation with what we're trying to do. And this is not an easy time for our seniors. But is is has there been any issues pertaining to students who want to apply for college? Has there been any restrictions that maybe we can look at supporting? Uh I know that there has been some concerns that if we. Um unless the colleges are on board, I I don't know if there's any updates regarding that when it comes to high school seniors.
Yes, the there are a number of changes happening at the college level. Uh they are, they are making adjustments to help our students get into the next level as well. Our people are staying abreast of all the changes that are coming out of CSU and US uh UC system. And and our counselors are are being briefed as well. So we are on top of that. And uh we are, we are managing that on a day-to-day basis as the information comes out, but we're making sure that our children do not miss any opportunities to go on to college.
And will the counselors uh be connecting with the students uh? On on, I'm not sure what that would look like on a regular basis, on a weekly basis, just to keep up or maybe monthly. I'm not sure what that would look like.
Dr. Perez.
I can address that, yes. Um so on that final slide that Dr. Mitchell was sharing, um the counselors specifically will be reaching out to to their seniors. Um as they're our most critical concern right now. We had, we expect that they will also be reaching out to other students, but specifically the seniors as. Time is of the essence with them with relationship to graduation and transition to um their post sec- their um college and and. Work opportunities.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. That was it.
Sorry, I was muted. Dr. Flores?
Uh yes, um I have several questions um. Or comments. I wanted to uh thank uh Janie uh for and Linda Bardir for adding that phone number. Uh just one moment. I'm sorry, somebody's talking. Sorry, um somebody was on the phone. I'm sorry. Um and I'm also concerned uh like uh. Ms. Medina, because I I know you added another school, but I'm still concerned with the West Side. With Rio and Rio Vista area in the so in the Salinas area. I know you said they could go to Moscouy. But I'm still concerned um for the parents in that area and Martin Luther King School. Uh and uh so I I I hope that our parents are able to. Um you know, use this number to let us know. Um because we have a lot of 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 parents and and kids in that particular area. And then, Dr. Perez, I wanted to ask you, is our hotline still functioning in terms of mental health, suicide watch, et cetera?
Yes, thank you for that question. Um actually, it is. And uh Ms. Bardir. Has replaced that in the um more prominent rotation on our district website. So that it it's got a a pretty prominent place there. So families, when they go, they're able to see that and it's not, you know, kind of packed in. Um behind other things.
Okay, and is it being used? Do you know? Do you happen to know if it's it's still being used?
Uh yes, we do. We do get um calls and um through the line and and still getting things through referrals. That all of that is still happening and I will continue to report to the board um that information ongoing.
All right, thank you. Then the next uh three or four questions are for you. Um. Uh Dr. Uh Mitchell, thank you for your presentation. It's a big lift. Uh I commend all of your committees. Uh the five committees um that are working. Um I have a a few concerns. Uh I wanted to ask about the TK and K and first graders. Uh I know that um I worked a lot with the TK and K and first grade teachers. And so a- are we providing um printed materials for them? Because I don't know if they would be able to, I know, I know that they are able to use uh devices like. You know, for Imagine Learning programs for um some of our uh, you know, uh footsteps to brilliance and also Myon. But I'm wondering, you know, can they, are we going to provide packets for them instead of just having like digital uh teaching and learning?
Uh at this point, it's not in the plan, but we did make sure that we're reserving for our K one students. Um the use of iPads because they're they're just tact- from a tactile perspective, they're better. Um but we can certainly, I can certainly bring that consideration to the to the group.
For printed materials, you mean, for them to do?
Yes, I'll bring that consideration.
And I only saying that because uh my granddaughter uh as a kindergarten and first grader is very used to her packets. And knows that, you know, what she has to do and et cetera, et cetera. And I would think that, you know, they're little, they're so little, they they need that routine. This would be, and they only go on iPads. For, you know, a variety, not not a long time, but you know, certain times during the day and it's not a lot. So I I was concerned about that.
Got it. Thank you.
Also, also, I'm really glad that you have differentiation, especially for our ELLs. And I I, you know, I know you had to go through it very fast, but it would be wonderful to see, you know, just this little smidge of. Of something that we have for our ELLs uh in terms of of what the, you know, you've created. Uh for them. I was particularly concerned with our high school ELLs because our um. Our uh success is not very well, I mean, we we don't have very high success in our L tells uh graduating from high school. So I'm really concerned about that. So have we developed uh or have they developed um units or things for them?
Yes, so and 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 thank you for acknowledging the EL resources and 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 given the time, I wasn't able to. Show you everything, but we have a load of uh resources for our EL students embedded through the whole. Through the through the whole scope and sequence and through the whole EL. So even prior to distance learning. We made, we were very deliberate about conjoining. we made, we were very deliberate about conjoining, uh, uh, Ms. Applegate's work and department with our base core program. Um, so that we embedded all of our EL resources into, um, our regular, our regular curriculum guides and scope and sequences. So that was already there. Uh, but on top of the distance learning, um, the team was able to add some additional resources from a digital perspective that I think adds more value to what we're doing. So would, would happy, be happy to have staff or myself sit down with you and show you hosts of wonderful materials that are.
I would love that. I would like to see also the other stuff, you know, and all the, the mathematics, all the other, all the other, I would like to, a sampling of it, just to see.
Could not possibly give you everything tonight, but I would love.
I know, I know. And I want to commend the teachers.
Yeah.
Uh, I want to commend all the teachers for jumping on and working on learning Google Classroom. Uh, that's a tremendous lift and, um, it's a, it's a, just a tribute to them, uh, to learn. Uh, I know when I was learning distance learning at the university level, it was, you know, trial and error. I think we've gotten a lot better, um, in terms of that. And I'm glad to see that you had that hub. What did you call it? Um?
The resources, the website?
Where they could learn Google Classroom. What was the name of it?
Yeah, um, the training platform, yes.
Yeah, the training platform, but you called it a hub. And, uh, and I noticed that, uh, President Alcala mentioned that they still had some things to, to deal with in terms of synchronous and, and I saw on their asynchronous, uh, teaching.
Yep.
Uh, and I recall that, um, my students preferred that I present, uh, you know, first tell them what were the goals and then present, you know, through video or PowerPoint. And then the synchronous part was their questions.
Yep.
Where the kids would add, I would not kids, but my students were able to ask questions. And so the questions were live. They did not like it when I was presenting, uh, uh, how would I say?
Live.
Live, right? When I was presenting live, they wanted me to, you know, do it like a PowerPoint or, uh, or, or else use videos and then come back. And then we would, you know, of course, they would write their, their questions and stuff, but we would be able to answer them that way. So I don't know, I don't know if you guys have looked at that or at the pros and the cons. Cause I'd like to go into the hub and see if they've given pros and cons to that. And I have to tell you, I've been on some, um, I mean, I'm old, okay? And I have discipline, but I was on a, um, two-day, uh, uh, um, call or, or video conferencing, right? It was really tough to pay attention, uh, you know, a, and, and we had only like a 15-minute break in the morning and lunch and then a 15-minute break. It was intense and I, it's, I don't know if kids can and teachers can even hold kids attentions. And then, and then you don't know who's running around the house. Or you don't know where, if they have, if the kids have a, a space. Um, so I don't know how you're going to work all that out. But I hope that we'll use the best practices, uh, that teachers need. So, um.
Just address a couple things. So number one, we're in complete agreement. The reality of it is, is that a good, uh, digital environment is really a hybrid of both. And we would expect teachers to be able to make decisions to, to, to best meet the need of the grade level and the developmental level of kids. And we also know that, uh, no one wants to be lectured to all day. But then also we don't want to have no contact with kids either. So the reality of it is, is that even like in the classroom, good teaching is a little bit of both and a hybrid of both. And we would expect that teachers would have the same approach in a digital environment.
Right. So it would be up to the teacher and the function of say the lessons and all of that. Because it'll be difficult, it's going to be difficult. I can't even imagine a high school teacher having 40 students online. And I don't even know if they'll be online, maybe 50 minutes. I don't know. I have no idea, but I, I think.
Bringing back Ashley's words of, of being flexible, reasonable, uh, Mr. Tillman's words of being patient with our, with our, with our learners. And so that, that's the push that we're going to take, Dr. Flores.
Okay, great. Okay, that'll be good. Cause it'll be important to, to know all, I mean, for us to do that. Uh, because it's like trial and error, right? We're learning on as we're doing. So, uh, I, again, I want to thank, uh, all your team and all our teachers and administrators for the big lift that we're doing. So thank you very much. Thank you.
So much. All right. Neil, you've been waiting patiently. You're up next.
Well, thank you so much. I have just a few questions. Uh, but first my compliment to the updates. All of you did just a marvelous job. And I admire you so much because it takes a lot of time, patience, creativity. You know, listening to everyone and, and, and obviously, uh, it has been successful. Because I'm impressed with the short period of time and the amount of things you've gotten done. But so I just have, uh, and my question primarily is for, uh, Dr. Mitchell. I'm hoping that, uh, you will somewhere down the road, take a look at giving teachers credit for this training. I don't know if you can get college credit for the training or not, because if it's the way we are going and, and it looks like when school starts in August or whenever, there will be a need for more distance learning. Uh, uh, I, I'm hoping that that would happen. And, and that's really not a question, it's, it's a question comment. So listen to the comments, uh, not worry about questioning, you don't need to answer that. And then, yeah, and then I was going to ask you, at the rate of going and with your team, your task, uh, committee, are they looking at doing this again next year? Or are you going to wait and see the success of it first?
So, so, uh, uh, my direction to the team was to plan as though we won't be back until December. So we wanted to plan, uh, for the long haul. Like this system has to work for this community at this time. Uh, so we wanted to plan not in a temporary fashion. That's why the systems are so robust. As a cabinet team, we approached that, uh, this distance learning as this may be something that we may be engaged in for the next foreseeable future. So we wanted to build something that works long-term. But let's say kids do come back in August. Uh, what we want to do, what I've asked the team to do is to form, um, what is our next iteration of the work groups? What are the new questions that, that might, uh, uh, confront us? Uh, what pieces would we continue on in terms of distance learning if kids are back at school? For example, there's an opportunity for doing enrollment at our colleges. Uh, there's an opportunity, um, for, for, um, uh, distance learning over the weekend. Enrichment, sometimes we don't provide enrichment for some of our higher achieving students. There's opportunities there. There's opportunities for summer school, to do summer school differently for high schools. Um, where, where we always struggled with, uh, uh, not having enough room for kids to make up courses and enrich courses. There was a time, uh, not too distant ago, even, even when I was in high school, you were able to get ahead in summer school. Now, um, we've been so limited with our staffing and budget that we've only been able to provide credit recovery. And so we, we can get back to those kinds of things. So there will be aspects that we bring forward, even if kids come back. Uh, similar to what we were doing now. We were doing, a lot of our teachers in our district right now are doing Google Classroom. When, you know, um, with kids being in school on a regular day too. So we, we think there's a lot of possibilities and we think that this, uh, this, uh, situation that we're in is going to change education for good. And we want to take full advantage of that alongside our staff.
Well, well, great. I'm, I'm glad, and I'm just really jazzed. I'm glad to hear that. Cause I see some things, uh, especially with classroom arrangements that was in place when I was in elementary school. And that was, well, I put it this way, I graduated 50 years ago. So you know how long ago it was I was in elementary. Uh, my third question, uh, and, and you mentioned that some teachers already doing Google Classroom. Would you say about 50% of teachers are already doing this? So you don't have that minute to train?
You know, I don't want to say that high.
Okay.
I, I, I don't, and in fact, I don't even want to try to give an estimate. Uh, my team will text me and say, you're wrong. So I'm, 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 I'm holding that estimate and I'll ask the experts tomorrow.
Okay, all right. And then my final question for you. What has been the biggest challenge for the teachers? So far, and working with, uh, Google Classroom, what has been the biggest challenge?
You, you know, I, I haven't heard a lot from teachers so far. But I am, but I can, uh, uh, talk about, uh, I've heard a lot from our principals who are expressing concerns from their teachers. And just number one, it, this is a huge shift and par, it's a cultural shift. It's a paradigm shift. There's fear, uh, uh, related to change. Um, there's concern about can we make it work? What, what will our expectations as administrators be? And I think that's causing some fear with teachers. And that's why I've been expressing over and over and over again that we agree with the sentiments of our union. We agree with the board that we're going to go slow to go fast, that we're going to be patient with folks, that we don't expect people to be experts tomorrow. Similar to teaching in the classroom. Uh, you, you're not as good as a first year teacher are, as you are as a fifth year teacher. And so we get that and we want, and we want to really convey that and, 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 and really help principals understand that we want them to support teachers, we want them to learn with teachers. And that we're not looking in, looking to kind of be like, um, uh, distance learning police and make sure and want everybody to be experts tomorrow. So, uh, as much as we can say that, I think we have to have teachers experience that sentiment before it'll be believable. So I think we just need time and, 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 and so people can see our, our, our sentiment and our hearts around, hey, let's try this out. It's new for everybody. We're going to learn all the way and we're not going to get it right for, for now. And we need to be patient with, with ourselves and also convey that to our staff.
Well, thank you so much. And, and I appreciate the, your, your last words especially. I think it's important for, uh, the teachers to know that, uh, we don't want to say one thing, you know, that we can be patient. We need to discipline, you know, we can, we need to walk the walk as we talk the talk. And I think as long as you do that, I, I know the board is supportive of the going, uh, uh, you know, as, as, as slow as you can.
Yeah.
But we know we aren't going to get it, get it right the, the first time, but, uh, but, but it's a start. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe it's, is Mr. Tillman?
Yes, um, I selected the website, um, Dr. Mitchell. And I know the day is the April the 77th, gonna start on 20th. But there's not really any training out there in Google Classroom for parents. Are there any, um?
Yeah, we've embedded in the parent resources that I just showed you. And unfortunately I went through it really fast. But there's a lot of resources in the website I just shared with you around the parents and we're, we're going to ramp that up.
But it's not a training class though. I mean, it would be nice if there was a training class for Google Class for parents. Now, it may be out there and we can buy something, but it'd be great if it was just a video and said, you know, they have some stuff in there about, uh, you have to get your students ID and that type of thing. But it's not anything that's, uh, uh, that's similar to what you're doing in terms of the classes for the teachers. If there's something out there, it'd be great. You know, you could put out to the website and say, here's a training class for the upcoming Google Class, especially for those parents of younger students. I'm assuming that some of our high school students have had some interaction with Google Class already. So their learning curve will be a lot, uh, uh, lower. But for the parents who have kids in elementary school, it's going to be something brand new for a lot of us. So if we could, if we could, you know, give them a class, it'd be great. And then maybe you could ask.
For that real quick, Google has that. And what we can do is prioritize that and, and push, push that out with parents to make sure our parents get that. I mean, it's, it's in Google Suite, but I think we can pull it out from under the sub menus and actually highlight.
Good, right. That'd be great. And then, and then what is the thought? Is, is say for instance, for an elementary age student, uh, how, what time are the classes going to start and what time are the classes going to end?
So, uh, what, what we've done is we've given some sample schedules for early elementary, middle elementary, middle school and high school. And we're asking principals to work with their staff. That should be a site-based decision. For example, uh, you don't want, you, you want the grade level, you want elementary teachers to be able to team together, even co-teach together. Uh, you want to make sure that you're not having meetings that are stepping on time. And, and you also kind of want to get, you really want to get the teacher's voice on that. Because again, we are, we are, are, all of us are managing our own kids, our own lives in this, in this, uh, in this COVID pandemic as well. And then like, if, if, for example, at the middle and high school, you can't have, you gotta have some semblance of a schedule that the teacher agrees upon. So what we've, what we've asked our principals to do is, uh, put together a sample schedule that teachers can live with. We still are waiting on guidance from our, our, our negotiations with the union that will codify some of this work as well. So some of this is negotiable. We're trying to codify some language as guidelines. We can't, we don't want to create language that is inflexible. But we need some guidelines that are coming out of our negotiation team. We're waiting on that. But at the same time, we also are asking our principals to really work with their staff to create a school schedule that works for most people.
Right. Cause the thing I'm looking at for, say you have a, a third grader and, and the household is, is, is perfect for being conducive to, uh, educational environment. No chaos at all. So that, that, that parent will want to know, okay, what time do I sign on? Is it going to be nine o'clock? Is it going to be 10 o'clock? Is it going to be a, a break for lunch? And do they come back and, and does it, and what time does it end?
Yeah.
Right. And then the same thing at the high school level, are there, going to go through all the classes? Are all the PE classes going to be eliminated? Uh, what's going to happen with, uh, those type of classes? Or, or if we had pottery and ceramics, is that, is that to go away? What, what, uh, what's going to be the process?
Yeah, we're answering those questions now. And so principals are working with your schools to create that, to have that conversation. And we're going to help our principals when they start producing some samples and some models and giving guidance. And also make sure that it aligns to what we're agreeing to with the union. So I can't answer that today, but that's coming shortly. That's our next step.
And I would just hope that we would be able to answer before the 20th. Twenty is the day that you're going to start, right?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll have it answered before Monday. Before, before the coming Monday.
Right. And then, and this, I was going to say this in board comment, but I may as well say it now. I really think the district should look at, uh, starting next year, school year later. I think we should push it to September, only because the further away we get from this virus, then the more stability I think we'll have. Uh, and I think the more time we buy ourselves, the better off we're going to be. Because we don't really know when this is going to subside, but if we could get back to something more normal, if we give ourselves more time, I think we should consider that. So rather than start in the beginning of August, I think we should wait until sometime in September. Is this something that should be agendaed maybe for a later meeting, a, a later meeting board? But I think we should definitely look at, uh, what day we're going to start school. I don't think it should be the first day, the first week in August. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Um.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Yes, I forgot to ask regarding students that, um, may, may not be here in Seminor Dino right now. They may, may be with a relative. Um, so I'm wondering, what does that look like when it comes to the education with the computers and communication?
Those, those kids would enroll in our schools and we'd get them set up.
No, no, meaning that's, they're, they're students of ours, but for some reason, if they're at a relative's house and they're staying there during the COVID. So I'm just curious on what that looks like if, if there's students that are not currently, um, in the district, but yet are students of our, uh, students of our district.
Dr. Perez, you, you, can you help me with that question?
Sure. So I think I, I, I understand it that, so if, if, actually, Mr. Tillman gave a perfect example of his nephew. So he's a student of ours, but he's not necessarily, um, in our district right now. That's the beauty, I think, of the distance learning is that they're still able to have that, um, education and ongoing learning experience. Because we are providing that, um, that learning opportunity via distance learning. Is that, is that?
That was, after Danny's Tillman situation. So the thing is that I was wondering, what does that look like regarding, um, items need to be sent? Uh, computers or for whatever, whatever items they may need. What does that look like? Just making sure that we're still connecting with them, even, even if they were not necessarily in the city.
So I think, um, accommodations, you know, would need to be made with the family to get those items, whether they be a computer or packets. I think that, that may be what you're referring to, to students. Um, but yes, we would ensure that we would, you know, make every effort for students to have access. Uh, if it's a, if it's the technology, once they have that technology, then they're full stream ahead along with their peers.
Okay, just clarifying that. Thank you so much. Mr. Gallow?
Yes, thank you. Um, this is.
This is, as everybody's kind of commented, is is a difficult task. And I'd like to see if there's a way we could uh maybe through some sort of incentivization, uh uh even if it's a contest to come up with the most creative uh online uh instruction. Uh there's, uh, we have a lot of creative teachers in our district that are coming up with some really great uh videos and and their own, just their own content, uh as if as they do in the classroom. And um it might be a good thing to figure out how we can share uh uh these kind of great lessons that um uh teachers prepare as well, you know, with other teachers in the district to um, you know, ensure that that quality instruction is able to be passed around, similar to how we've instituted and set up our demonstration classrooms. And um, you know, there may be some kind of incentive that we could, we could figure out on how to do it. And um, you know, I know uh like an industry, um you know, they've uh uh it's kind of PowerPointless, um is how they've attributed the PowerPoint presentations that are so boring, you're putting rocket scientists asleep, if that were possible. Um and so coming up with some creative ways on, um you know, what students are watching, just just watch the YouTube stuff and it's a, it's a lot of content jam-packed into a fast-moving, fast-paced environment. And then they can replay it and replay it and replay it. And um, I think those are, those are important kind of elements that we may wanna build into this uh this thing, cuz it's a lot easier to critique than it is to create. Uh creating this content is is difficult. I mean, there's a lot of resources. As Keenan shared with us, uh appreciate that, uh Keenan. Um well, the entire team, I know you guys have been working on it, uh great, but you know, perhaps an incentive, you know, way to incent our teachers and um you know, we've we've got uh innovation awards, maybe we could come up with the most creative content award or something like that. And um, um you know, kind of celebrate the great work that some of our teachers are doing.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Great comments. And we're we're taking that into consideration.
All right, Dr. Flores?
Uh yes, uh I just wanted to uh you know, respond to um Mr. Tillman and um Abigail, uh Ms. Medina and uh Mr. Gallo's comments and stuff. And um this uh, this metaphor uh captures what we're doing. We're, we're building the plane as we go along because it's so new to us. And so uh we, we need to also provide space for the creativity of our teachers, cuz I agree with Mr. Gallo. We have incredible teachers that can build um, you know, and create different ways of teaching uh and learning. Um I also think that uh we have to be flexible, uh we have to, you know, I know that my granddaughter's teacher reached out to her right away, you know, to to the whole class in terms of, you know, to let him know that she missed them and so forth. Um so I I have no doubts that our teachers are gonna contact our kids, because I'm sure lots of them did already. Uh so uh I think that uh we have to be flexible. We have to be uh open to new ways of of creating lessons and engaging and long and distance learning. Uh we have to trust our teachers, uh we have to, you know, um believe that they can do it. I I I mean, the scheduling's gonna be a nightmare. So I I can just think about the high school, like Danny said. I mean, uh so the teachers are gonna have to figure out, you know, what they can do with the kids and when and so forth. So it's a, it it's a big lift. And like I said, we're building the plane as we go along. So that's for you, Mr. Gallo. Pilot Gallo. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, board, for all of your comments. I think, let me double check. I think I got them all. I wanna thank all of you for your presentations. They were good, they were thorough. I mean, again, as we are in this uncharted territory, as this word is constantly being used, that's where we are. But I think you guys are doing a great job. All the voices are engaged. Just what Mr. Gallo had mentioned earlier, I know of schools that were already using Google Classroom and definitely are part of the list that Dr. Mitchell showed us, that they'll be lending some of their supports. Because when it's done, you know, once you've learned it, it, you move forward with it. We all know there was a time when we weren't even familiar with computers and all of this other virtual things that we're doing. But it came a point in time when we had to step out into it and we learned from our mistakes and we moved forward. So I certainly appreciate everything that the district is doing. They're moving onward and upward and they're raising a heavy lift. But it's all for our students. So we appreciate you and thank you, and we're here to continue to support you because we don't all have the answers either, because this is brand new, but together we can brainstorm and do what's best for our students. So thank you. I want to thank Shane. Um Karen, are you there? For his patience, I know this was a lengthy presentation and the next one will be a little world bust as well. But if he is there on the line, I definitely wanna dial back and hear his comments.
This is Shane. Can you hear me?
Yes. Hi, how are you?
Good evening. Thank you, Madam President and the board, superintendent and staff. Thank you for listening to me. So I I had, I had uh been at home and my phone had blown up over the fact that the MOU that we uh had on the agenda tonight had been tabled. And so there was some, yeah, I I I didn't know that was um ultimately going to be the outcome or the reason why. Um you know, so I, because I have you know, the entire classified staff looking towards me to make sure that uh those classified warriors that are found to be or or being used as essential are uh being protected, um you know, preparing the food, the daycare. Um you know, and then and with anticipation of uh another, I think, forty-eight uh M and M and O employees preparing to go to back, back to work on the thirteenth, uh that there's an MOU um you know, signed, uh so I don't uh have those employees concerned about their compensation during this time. You know, uh it was just today that um you know, I'm I'm back in my own district and uh just today, uh my AP at my school site that I worked at for sixteen years is uh currently on a ventilator. You know, fighting this, this horrible, horrible uh disease. And so, you know, when when you say uh the good old days, you know, we don't realize that we're only talking about six weeks ago. You know, it's 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 a very, very trying time. So I was just hoping that, you know, there could be some direction that I could be given as to why the um the MOU was tabled. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And just so the public knows, I'm I'm sorry, Shane, I just addressed you by your first name, but he is calling and representing California uh School Employees Association, so that you do know that formally. And um I'm sure the district will be reaching out to you on behalf of the board um reasoning. Um there are questions that needed to be um answered. And so getting back to you. You know, we have questions, so.
Thank you very much for taking my call. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so now we will move to our sec- second presentation. And that is the report on our rights to resources. This was a very important topic. Again, you know, all of our topics are are important. But this was one that we wanted to make sure that we we discussed sooner than later. We know that our, at our last board meeting, our last regular board meeting, this came up. And um definitely, when these type of concerns come up, it is our duty as a board or as a governing board to get clarity around this. And I think all of the board members have had an opportunity to look at this report. And so now we want to discuss this report and we will now turn it over to Dr. Volkerma.
Thank you, President Rogers. Uh President Rogers framed it very well in terms of what happened at the last board meeting. Uh Dr. Flores bringing the report to our attention. Board, you asked that we have legal counsel take a look at the report uh and prepare um an analysis. And so we have with us this evening Todd Robbins from uh the law firm of Atkinson Anderson Lawyer, Root and Romo, uh who is prepared uh to share his analysis of the report. So we'll turn it over to Todd at this point.
Hey, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry, I'm getting used to using the video platforms here. Then I, my camera's not working, so I apologize. Um, okay, so we uh we took a look at the report from the uh public advocates uh who clearly did their work investigating some local school districts and their expenditure of supplemental and concentration grant funding. We went into, you know, great depth, looking at what their arguments were, what their conclusions were. But most importantly, for the school district's purpose, we looked to see whether there were any specific allegations made against the school district um that we would need to remedy. And right now, um you know, what it looks like is they are making some general observations about how school districts are spending supplemental and concentration grant money. Just as a review, that is the money under the um that is the money that that school districts get for the students who are very high need uh to help them improve uh in their academic performance and and to provide them with other resources. And that that money generally nev- uh needs to be principally directed toward those students. And the the LCAP has to describe in detail how those resources are being spent, how they help improve academic improve uh academic performance at a school site and if they are uh if that money is spent across uh the entire district, it has to show that it's there to address the target goals and and, you know, the things that that impact high need students. So that money has a very specific purpose. It can't just be spent on on uh salaries, it can't just be spent on other things. It has to really be directed at those highest need students. And so they, the the group takes the position that that the supplemental and concentration uh great grant monies can never be spent on law enforcement for any purpose. But that's, that's a pretty broad conclusion that overlooks some of the ways that law enforcement is being used in a lot of districts uh to provide mentoring services, to provide some restorative practices and things like that. So we looked kind of at the surface level of the district's LCAP and what we were able to identify without, you know, kind of going line by line through your budget and through the LCAP expenditures. And we identified some things that you are spending supplemental concentration grant money on um that very likely satisfy all of the the requirements for that money. So for example, Avid is a program that's that's perfectly uh valid use of supplemental and concentration grant money. But then we also found that you are spending um some of the supplemental uh concentration grant money, it looks like on collaboration with law enforcement and the district's attorney's office with Breaking Barriers United at a middle, at all middle schools and also are spending some of that money on gang reduction and intervention programs. Called GRIP, uh including campus security officers and SWSS staff at four elementary schools. Uh and so it is, is possible that those expenditures that that appear to be on some law enforcement resources are actually being spent for purposes of of improving student performance, improving dropout rates, all of those types of things. There are also some uh expenditures in your LCAP where you have line items for services that reference sheriff and school police that may be implemented district-wide for trauma-informed and and uh ending. There's a project prevent grant. And then you also have some city organizational partnerships and things like that, where it looks like some of that that money may be being spent. And again, this is uh this trauma-informed discipline issue is a component of restorative justice, which is a, uh which is an appropriate, a proper use of supplemental concentration grant money. Uh we wouldn't wanna see supplemental concentration grant money just being spent to fund the the school district's police department or to purchase resources for the police department. But if the money is being spent to use law enforcement resources to help um mentor students, to help bring about restorative practices and implement those restorative practices, those types of things are uh an acceptable use of the money. Uh so again, from our surface level review, we don't necessarily think that um this report is targeted directly at San Bernardino City. I think what 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 our conclusion is that is making general findings that expenditures uh on law enforcement resources that aren't being used to improve student achievement, to improve uh in lower dropout rates, to uh bring about um restorative practices and other social justice measures, those types of expenditures aren't proper. Um so what we would need to do to get kind of a further in-depth uh analysis is uh to do a real hard line-by-line review of your LCAP to see if there's any budget expenditures in there that may be uh directed uh exclusively towards law enforcement and not towards students. Um we would need to also really scrutinize the budget to look at how the money is being spent, that specific money, the supplemental concentration grant money. Uh and to see when, when that money is allocated for school law enforcement resources, whether it's being used for uh proper pers- purposes or improper purposes. So I think the takeaway from the report is that, you know, it it makes us aware of things that that supplemental and concentration grant money should not be spent on. Uh and it also, you know, gives us an opportunity to review our practices to make sure that uh they are in line with the requirements. And if there's anything that needs to be fixed, uh I know uh in my conversations with administration over this topic that that they're willing to fix it. So um that's, that's where we are at this point. And I think, like I said, if 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 there's a more in-depth review of the budget desired, uh that would be a next step. That would, it'd probably take a little bit of time uh to get that process done.
Thank you for for beginning that comment, the the comments for us, because in the spirit of transparency, naturally, when something is aligned with being illegal, it is our job to ensure that it's not or make those corrections that need to be made. And so what I'm hearing you say, um from what you've looked at so far on on indicating that this was an illegal, something illegal um here, I mean, what was your assessment for that?
Well, we, like I said, uh our review of the report, we didn't find anything in the report that specifically called out uh an expenditure in the district. Uh it it didn't specifically say what San Bernardino City Unified is doing here is illegal. It is just making a broad kind of policy statement that use of of school district resources. And again, you have to remember, it examined a lot of school districts, not just San Bernardino City. And use of 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 supplemental and concentration grant money for these purposes is not allowed under LCFF. Um but again, they didn't target anything specific at all in your school district. And so um it just kind of, like I said, it makes us aware that maybe we need to review our our practices to make sure we are in line. But it didn't call anything specific that you're doing into question.
Okay, that's good. And and what you already mentioned, going through, cuz I think this item is important for us to drill down even further, so we know. Our first comment is Dr. Flores and then Mr. Gallo.
Thank you. Um, thank you for your presentation. Uh I'm the one that brought this forth. It was um, you know, unsettling uh for me to read that uh uh illegal misuse of uh co- uh supplemental and concentration illegal misuse of supplemental and concentration funds and that we were in there. What kind of upset me was what was written that I quote on page 21, "San Bernardino City Unified employs 40 sworn police officers, but we cannot determine whether SNC funds were used to pay for these officers because it is not listed in the LCAP." The San Bernardino City Unified School District LCAP reflects only 18% of San Bernardino City Unified School District's budget, which means a large portion of the supplemental and concentration funds are not accounted for in the LCAP. So that brought up a red flag. However, we were presented with a budget report as well because the LCAP happened to be on the March 17 agenda. And on page six of the budget report, I'll show it to you, it specifies school police 9.5 million. And so my question is for our board and for our administration was to, like you said, itemize item by item. You know, if we have, what have we done? Like you said, what have we used it for? What have we not used it for? And I want to preface that I support our police. I do not think that we shouldn't support our police. I think they're very, they're very good and they they protect us. And but I also was disturbed or, you know, unsettled about, you know, the claim that we're illegally misusing supplemental and concentration funds. And these are attorneys, the ACLU, and advocates are attorneys like yourself. And so, like you said, in the report, they couldn't find it. But then I found it because we got it that day, you know, the the budget. And so I personally, Board, would like for us to itemize what we have, you know, what we're dedicating the 9.5 million to, itemize it in terms of that. And if we are doing that, then we have to redirect that money and then go to our general budget where we can spend that money, you know, whatever way we see fit. So we're going to have to readjust our budget. And so those are my comments for right now.
All right, Mr. Gallo.
Yeah, thank you. My comment is similar to Barbara's, but I take issue with the way it was characterized as just kind of a broad concern and stuff. This is basically an outright accusation of misappropriation of funds. And I think the board, it's incumbent upon the board to call for an evaluation of exactly where those funds are being spent and what they're being spent on. And you guys know I'm a big supporter of our police department, law enforcement, especially in in developing relationships with our youth. You know, we've developed an entire youth court, a positive tickets environment, a lot of things that are helping our school culture and things as well. And so, you know, I I have confidence that we're, we would be spending it appropriately for youth services. But I'd like to know that and prove to the public that this is what we are spending our funds for and that there are appropriate expenditures for our police department for these positive reinforcements and supports.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo.
Actually, you know, make a motion that we actually agendize this. I think we could commission a study of this certainly. I'm not sure we need it. I don't know. I guess it is agendized, so we don't really have to agendize it, but.
I think the next step, Gallo, will be to make sure that we get the itemized.
Recommendation would be to make a motion to that effect. Get a full evaluation and analysis of the expenditure of those. And and a report back in public as to what that's being done. So I'd make that motion.
So if we need a second on that, we want to go ahead and do that?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Can you please repeat, repeat the the motion? Because I'm not sure what it is.
I was basically calling for an analysis to be to be performed of the budget uses, the allocation.
The 9.5, the 9.5 million?
Yeah, well, okay, whatever the number turns out to be, that's a. And it's part of, as part of our local control funding formula.
Call for discussion?
Yes, I will. But I want to make sure we got the first and the second. Karen, you captured that? All right. We are now in the discussion. Mister, I didn't, let me make sure I didn't skip over. Ms. Medina, did you speak?
No, no, I haven't had a chance. My, my question, I mean, I agree with, that's why I seconded with looking at that, looking exactly of where that money is being spent, how it's being spent. But I'm also concerned with the fact that it went to the county and nobody saw anything wrong with it. So I want to also look at who are either through agencies that we hire, how are they overlooking some of these? They could have brought this to our attention. It shouldn't have to be outside of groups that have that do it. It should be people that we hire and the county should have definitely saw this coming. At least let us know, okay, this is, this is a red flag. Just clarify certain things so we can make sure that we're we're doing what's right.
Thank you. And then it was Dr. Flores and then Mr. Tillman.
Yes, can you hear me? Okay. I wanted to add that you probably, what's our attorney's name? What is your name? I'm sorry.
Todd Robbins.
Todd Robbins. I would like also, I mean, they did the legal analysis, ACLU and and Public Advocates. I think that it would behoove you to also look at what their legal analysis was.
And we did that. We prepared a memo.
You already asked them, you already asked them?
Well, we, we did an analysis of their report.
I'm, I'm asking you to ask for their legal analysis.
Oh, well, that might be attorney client privileged information, so.
So I guess we should ask them for their legal analysis.
We can try.
Us as a board.
Right, you can try, but again, it's, it's likely going to be attorney client privileged information. So I'm not sure, since they're not a public agency, they don't have a request for public records obligation like you do. So I I don't think that they would be necessarily willing to turn that information over to you voluntarily. But you could certainly ask them. I think, from what I, you know, am gathering from this little bullet point that references San Bernardino City, what they're, what they're basically asserting is that the absence of evidence in the LCAP is evidence of misappropriation, which I think is a faulty conclusion. And I think, you know, if Janie's on the line, she might be able to speak a little bit more about the review process of the the LCAP and how that works.
Well, we just made a motion and seconded to, you know, review our LCAP expenditures. And I think that's the prudent thing for us to do. Because as governing board, we are the fiscal agents. We are the ones responsible. And just like Mrs. Mrs. Medina said, you know, we need to also follow up with our county people to do that. And so, so thank you for clarifying that that would be a attorney client, I guess, conflict. But I think we, as a board, can, like Mr. Gallo said, look into the itemization of the expenditures.
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Tillman?
Lord, I'm telling you, this is a waste of time. The, the, over the years, the state has gone towards making money not restricted. For a number of years, there was money restricted in different parts. Only can be spent on certain things. Now, almost all money is general fund money. Now, we take a portion of the general fund money and we make up and we, we create items you want to spend in the quote unquote LCAP. But there is no LCAP money. These are, these are things that we're going to spend money on. And some of it happens to be money from the, for local control funding for the the students that get the extra money. But there is, there is no money restricted for LCAP. So it, what it comes down to is this, they're saying that you should get rid of your school police department and take that money and spend it on something else. The only question to the board is, is that what you want to do? If if you don't think that the the school police providing what I think is a great sense of security and safety, when we make a phone call, we don't have to depend on the city's police. And when the city went through bankruptcy, there were times where the whole city had three police to cover the whole city. So if I had a child that was in danger and we made a phone call to say we need some folks to respond here to, if it was a big fight or if there was something going on from when the kids were going from school to home, to me is a great feeling to know that we have that school police department. Now, as you know, I led the charge to to say we're not going to continue with these enormous amount of citations. And to the chief and the department's defense, that that has been reduced now. But do they play a huge role in terms of providing safety for our district? Yes. So the only question is, do you want to have a school police department or don't you? It has absolutely nothing to do with how the money was spent. As soon as they mention that you spent LCAP money on something, the argument is over. Why? Because there is no such thing as LCAP money. You have local control funding formula, which took the place of your basic Prop 98 money. Even Prop 98 still exists. But there is no money set aside for LCAP. So it's not as though you have some LCAP money that you spent on something other than what they deem quote unquote, something that is a LCAP expense. It doesn't make any sense. And and he, and this is my challenge to them. If we're doing this, wait until they sue us. Or if we're doing something illegal, have them come arrest somebody. It's not going to happen because they're just talking. The only question is this, do you want a school police department in your district or do you not? That's what it comes down to. LCAP, LCFF, you're wasting your time on, on making a first and a second and doing any more with this. It's a waste of time, trust me.
Thank you. But in this, again, as I prepare for Dr. Hill, in the spirit of transparency and what was, has been put out there, we need and have to respond. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam President. And I just want to briefly ask Mr. Gallo if he's willing to amend his motion. If we move forward after Mr. Tillman's statement, and I'm in agreement with Mr. Tillman, but if we do move forward with taking a look at the 9 million for school police, we might as well use the time to look at everybody that we've allotted funds to. And maybe we need to take a look at others as well. Because I would hate if if something happened and, you know, yes, you pulled 9 million out, sure don't want to leave somebody in there that's getting sums of money that's not having any impact on our kids. So I guess out of fairness, I'm just wondering if you'd be willing to not only look at that, just look at all of our allotments of funds.
Yeah, well, let me, let me comment on that, Dr. Hill. And I'm going to ask Barbara a question. You pulled that off a page, what of our budget? And it's called what, what was the 9 million for? Was it listed under LCAP? Did we report that as an LCAP expenditure? Just how, how was that characterized? Maybe Janie could respond.
Mike, it was in the budget that Janie gave us.
Yeah, I don't have it.
And it was under Schedule of Supplemental Concentration Programs as of January 31, 2020. And it was on page six, on page six. And that's where I got it.
Okay, great. Janie to respond and is that our allocation out of LCFF for the LCAP purpose?
Hello, Mr. Gallo.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Rogers.
No, I was calling you on. Thank you.
Mr. Gallo, that is our allocation for our our school police. This is tied to safety and a number of other things that I'd like to have a conversation with Terry and Janet on. It's above what most districts have to do in their base programs, considering that we want that safety for our school sites and students, so we can respond via B C.
Okay, what other funds are incorporated in addition to the 9 point something million that's on page six? But I'm trying to get to Dr. Hill's question. Would we modify and should we be looking at all of the expenditures?
About $500 million.
Of supplemental funds, huh?
The supplemental concentration is just under 140 million. We can provide you the schedule. It was in the budget book.
So, Dr. Hill, are you saying we should look at the 140 million and do an analysis? Or I'm sure we could just print it. I'm sure we know what it is, the way, where each of these allocations are. Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, if if that's the route of we going to vote to do it, I figured we might as well do it 100%. But I, I'm, I'm pleased with the comments from Todd that we have not done anything illegal. And I'm, I'm really pleased with that. I, I would like for us to take a look at other expenditures as well.
So I think next up again is Dr. Flores. But again, Board, remember, we were dealing with one item as of right now. That, that is the the issue that's at hand, what the motion that Mike made, is to look at that line item and have it broken out. Now, moving forward, if we want to look at other items or make that a new policy. But when you do look at it, and for those of you that don't remember it, you can go online because it's there on our website. And you can pull it up and you will see that, you know, the large item is there.
You know, what I really want to do and answer to Margaret's question, I think, is to maybe amend the motion to say, I want an analysis as to whether or not the accusation is founded that we misappropriated funds. Question I want answered.
And also, also, Mr. Gallo, it speaks to your, what you want to amend it to, it speaks to itemizing the 9.5 million. Because if we did spend some on restorative justice, then it'll appear, right? The portions of it that we misuse.
Question is misappropriation. I want to know where those may be. And that might lend itself to that, but I'd ask our legal counsel to perform that.
Well, I just want to interject. I just want to interject very quickly. There, there is no accusation of misappropriation. I think that that's really important.
Those were all exact words that I heard reflected in written statements and I saw in in writing about the characterization of this report.
Yep.
Well, the, the character, the report, the bullet point simply says that, quote, "We cannot determine whether supplemental and concentration grant funds are used to pay for these officers because it is not listed in the LCAP." The district's LCAP reflects.
Todd, so Todd, we need to know what the 9.5 million is dedicated to.
Correct, but that's not an accusation of misappropriation.
No, but it is.
I heard the public comment. I heard the rhetoric. I heard all of the stuff. I've heard the emails for which the report was attached to. All of them implied and certain, not implied, stated overtly that we did something wrong. And I want that, I want that evaluated by our legal counsel.
I call for a good question.
We still have other people in line, Ms. Rosales Medina? We still have other people in line, um, Ms. Rosales Medina and then Dr. Wyatt.
I just want to mention, um, I I come, I disagree with what Mr. Tillman was mentioning regarding the police. There's, we're not asking for the police officers to be, the department or the funding to be removed. All we're asking is to be that, for the funding to be removed out if that was the case, where it's not uh for the supplemental and concentration grant is supposed to be specified for the for LCFF regarding the three subgroups, right? So then what we're asking is that if there are extra money that shouldn't have been spent in that, in that line item, just to simply move that line item to another area that's not necessarily attached to the supplemental and concentration grant. It's not what we're asking. We don't, we're don't, we're not asking to eliminate the whole department, no more funding. So it's just allocating, making sure that if we're spending it right there in the concentration piece, that then we have to move that into another area of funding. So I completely agree. It's not going to be something that we're, we're planning to remove the funding for the department.
Thank you. Dr. Wyatt? Are you mute? On mute?
Yep. Thank you, Madam President. Just had to unmute real quick there and uh, you know, there's obviously a lot being said. And just want to thank uh Mr. Robbins as well, uh, you know, for his report and letting us know that there wasn't, on his opinion, no illegal action taken by our district. Uh, just for clarification, uh, point of order, uh, this question is for Chief Polino or for Janie. Um, do we actually employ forty officers? Because I didn't think we had that many officers on our force.
Not at all, sir. We have twenty officers emallotted for the department.
How many? I'm sorry?
Twenty-one.
Okay, I, that's what I thought. I thought we were somewhere in the the low twenties and nowhere near having forty officers. And, you know, to me, I I think we really need to stick with the facts. And when I read a report like this and um, you know, when they're stating numbers like that, and to me, it seems quite inflammatory on a number of different issues, not just a a singular number like that, uh, that is disconcerting to me. I mean, one, they're trying to say we're paying for forty officers illegally and misappropriating our supplementary concentration funds. And so to me, I look at validity as well. So just something I wanted to point out, and you know, I'm in absolute agreement with Mr. Tillman in regards to why we have our our school police and their mission and vision of what we do. Um, in addition to, you know, right when I came on this board, I I was a part of the Board Policy Committee where we changed our board citation policy um to where our police are now much more involved in community policing and have a proactive positive approach to what we do. I think we're, we're doing a lot of great things with our local department. Um, and we're not criminalizing our kids like um this report alleges a lot of police departments, school police departments do. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Flores, um, I guess we cut you off, so I wanted to make sure we heard your comments, Mr. Tillman and then Mr. Gallo, and I'll call for the vote.
Okay, I just wanted to uh make a point again. I am not against our police officers. I prize them very much. I support them. I am concerned, like Mr. Gallo and Ms. Medina, about um, you know, our our misuse or misappropriation of of supplemental and concentration uh funds. Uh, and the point is not to get rid of our our police, not whatsoever. That is not, I think, the intent. Uh, I don't know if everybody thoroughly read the report. I reread it again, uh, you know, yesterday and today. And um, you know, I would want to ask uh public advocates to even come and, you know, uh, give us their analysis or report it and make it transparent and public uh so that we can ask them questions. Uh, and uh, but I am in favor of Mr. Gallo's motion that we do, in fact, itemize the nine point five million uh so that we can uh, you know, look to see if i- i- if that is, you know, where do we spend the money? Where, how, what did we allocate it for? And just to clear, just to clear our um, you know, um, our doubts in in terms of uh, you know, uh, what uh the uh report says, we're not the only ones. They investigated districts in three counties, Los Angeles County, Riverside County and San Bernardino County. And uh, so, you know, I I I don't believe it's bogus. And if you look at what we're supposed to spend uh supplemental and concentration uh money's on, it's supposed to be spent on our low SES, our English learners and our foster kids. And so uh, that's the supplemental part. The concentration part, I think we can use for other things. But the supplemental is clearly in the law, in the law, what we're supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Mr. Tillman?
Yes, uh, the concern I have, the the initially whispered this was, Dr. Flores held up the report and she said that uh the superintendent broke the law and he got, had some grant money and he took the grant money and he spent it on the school police. And these folks are saying that he uh uh, he he broke the law on doing it and that's why he left the school district. That's like the weirdest conspiracy story ever heard in my life. But here's the thing.
Say that.
Well, go back and look at the, go back and look at the tape. I even got an email here saying the same thing.
Said I hold you responsible if it's so.
Okay, well, I had an email from somebody saying that the reason why I left is because some money was misappropriated. But here's the thing, so we, so we asked the question, um, Mr. Gallo, you say you wanted your legal counsel to review to determine if we did anything illegal, inappropriate. You've done that already. That's what the guy just told you tonight. So my only point is, so what are you continuing it for? The the bottom line is this, do you want a school police department or not? If you read the story, they talk about Pomona, because I got the email here from ICUC. They have a story about this, the people in Pomona said that the the, that they shouldn't use school district money to pay for school police. So somehow they switched how they spent the money and they 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 got some money to pay for something else. It's the most confusing thing in the world. The bottom line is, this board spends the money on what they want to. Do you want a police department or not? It is, it's, it's not, it's just that simple. So so to go on and do more discussing about it, and you can, uh, that's if you guys want to. But I'm telling you, we're totally wasting our time. And I'm really scared because you guys are are empowering these people who just make up stuff and then we jump. It's no different, I didn't go to the last meeting because there's this new group called the superintendents and they say something and we have to have emergency meetings. The board is empowered to make decisions for this district, nobody else. We make decisions to support a school police department. That's it. Either you want the police department or you don't. You already asked the question, what, did we, have we spent any money inappropriate or illegally? The answer is no. So what else did they talk about?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tillman, Mr. Gallo, and then we're going to take the vote. But to be clear again, is to address the line item and this line item only.
Yes, I listened very carefully to what our attorney said. And he did not, he did not say it in those terms, that we didn't do anything uh that is misappropriation or whatever. It, that, that is not what I heard. If it's easy, if it's, if that's what he said, put it in writing and let me have it. Uh, and and let, let the law firm stand behind that. That's all I'm really asking for, is our legal opinion uh on this. And that will, as he indicated, that might uh mean he would have to take a look at in more detail uh the expenditures. Um, that's what I heard. So I did not hear uh that we didn't do anything wrong or the funds weren't uh spent inappropriately uh or inconsistent or that was inconsistent with the supplemental uh uh funding and concentration funds. Then I want to ask Janie a question. What's the percentage of our students that fall into the supplemental and concentration percentage?
Yes, Mr. Gallo, it's ninety percent so we can do district-wide actions.
Right. I just want that emphasized. Um, maybe you could repeat that again, Janie.
All right. Are we ready to take the vote? All right, Mr. Gallo?
Yeah, let me, I, and I, I think Barbara re-characterized my uh, my motion to say that I'm calling for a, you know, budget analysis and things. I modified that to basically get a legal counsel's opinion, a formal opinion of the uh expenditure of our, for our supplemental and concentration funds that they were spent appropriately.
So you modified for the nine point five million or is it for everything?
I'm saying just in general, whatever is supposedly uh, you know, misappropriated, characterized in the report and uh, that's what I want to know.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second?
Word President, this is Todd Robbins. Can I, can I speak?
Yes.
So I I just want to go back to say that how Mr. Gallo characterized my comments is correct. I didn't conclude that the district's not doing anything illegal. I, my conclusion from reviewing the report are there are no specific accusations against the district. They, they make general statements that are not backed by any evidence. And he's correct by saying we would need to review everything in a lot more detail to reach conclusions about how things are being spent. But I do think um that it's important to note that that the district's budget does get reviewed. It does get audited uh every single year. And, you know, unless there've been findings on these issues, that's, that's going to be a critical piece of it.
Exactly.
And an auditor, an auditor is going to be another part of this that's going to be uh something that the district's going to need to look at using in order to reach these conclusions as well. So we can certainly.
Are audited, Todd. Not the whole budget is audited.
Uh, again, I I'm just, just speaking in terms of what I've experienced at other school districts with their boards and things like that. So what I, what I'm telling you is that um, we can look to see uh how these monies are being spent. Uh, we can work with the district, but it may also in involve having an outside auditor come in to look at that as well, to help out with that. So those are just some factors to consider in on all of this. But I, I refer to Mr. Gallo's characterization of my, my comments was correct.
Great, thank you. Uh, and just one more characterization here, one more comment. Um, I think this is a waste of time and it's reactionary by some inflammatory uh comments being made by these groups. So I'm uh certainly not accusing or even thinking that we inappropriately uh um misused uh these funds. And quite frankly, this expenditure of time uh and even engaging our attorney is going to cost money and take money away from the students that we're, we're wanting to fund. So I'm really wanting to do this uh um uh more for the public confidence.
Right.
We know what we're doing. We're looking at this stuff. We're expending uh funds in the best way possible to meet our students' needs, all of our students' needs, including providing safety, uh non-bullying environment, safe, uh secure environment for our kids conducive to learn. And uh, so I just have to say that uh personally.
Thank you. I believe there still needs to be a second on his motion.
A second, Margaret Hill.
All right, it's been moved improperly second. All right, we're calling for the vote. Dr. Flores? Yes. Mr. Tillman?
No.
Dr. Wyatt?
No.
Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, aye. Thank you. Motion carried. All right. Okay, we are now at our reports and comments. So we're at board members. I'll begin with Dr. Hill because you popped up on my screen. Oh, you went away. But Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam President. And I'll certainly keep it uh uh brief. Um, I I want to say I I appreciate uh interim superintendent Dr. Bokelmer and uh the cabinet, all the staff members and especially everyone who's been out there working on behalf of our young people uh for the last uh two, uh for the last two weeks and continue to work hard this week. And uh, you you appreciate it more than you, than you really know that you are. But my, my only other comment, I just wanted to say to um students who feel they, even if it's A, B, or C, and have decided they're not going to do any more work, I would strongly recommend you reconsider that because the punish, you're punishing yourself. Because there will be a day you will need to get into college and uh and and what you can learn, I'm sure will help you tremendously. But you're also going to go for a job interview and when people call to see how you are with your stick with it this, uh, this could, this could keep you out of a job that you really want. So I'm just hoping every student understands you are not in a building, but you are still challenged to do your best between now and June fourth. So please continue to work hard and know it won't be in vain. It is going to, it'll benefit you. You also will be able to get a uh a a a grade saying that you've actually earned everything and you'd not, you earned a grade, you were too much short of. So thank you. And again, um, uh, I'm sure that I, I'm sure I will feature that in my next uh newspaper article. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Tillman, you properly clicked on there. You are giving a comment. Go ahead and make your comment.
Thank you very much. Um, you know, I I I um, I want to make sure we don't lose sight of the gravity of the situation we're in right now. It's totally unprecedented. No one's ever lived through it. And uh, I don't think we can minimize that. There's so many people going through so much right now. I think it's only going to, going to continue to get worse for a little bit longer. Uh, I I I live with employees that come in shaking and scared about having to uh come into work. Uh, I've had to release employees because they cannot work because of the, the, the fear. I've seen people get sick and know people who have contracted the virus uh have, know of people who passed away because of the virus. So these are truly tough times that we're in right now, and I hope we don't try to minimize it. So moving forward with the distance learning, I'm all for it. But I hope we don't ever lose sight of the, the tremendous tragic things that are happening right now. And the, the, the goal still is to social distance. So whenever I I hear about us uh uh asking people to do things outside of that, I I do get concerned because that's what's flattening the curve, the fact that we're working along with everybody else to ensure that we're staying away from each other. That's the reason why we're doing this video conferencing. So I I think the more that we do, then the more safe, a lot more people are going to be. And last, I I I think because of this new era and going into this uh distance learning and video conferencing, I don't, I don't know, Dr. Mitchell, what you guys are talking about in terms of video and video of the student. But I have a real concern about um, if you're going to have a student of of being, of being video in a video conference, I have a concern about the background and uh things on the video. I I would almost want to not see uh students that are looking at each other's uh pictures on the site, and I don't know what the plan is. But I think it could be a bad thing in terms of uh peer pressure and other things in terms of what's happening in the background of a student's home. Because these are students and they don't control their home life. They, they live where their parents have them live. So uh, I have a, a real fear about um exposing to their peers and um others, what's, what's in their background. Because if you think about it, uh, if a, if a student has a computer up, his other family members in the house, they can see everything that's on that, uh, the other people's pictures also. Um, right now, um, Ms. Rogers only has a beautiful plant behind her. Mr. Gal, Mr. Gallo got all kinds of stuff in his office. But there, there, I I I grew up in a household, we didn't have a lot of money. And my mom used to take cloth and sew over the edge of the, the, the couch because all the um uh stuffing was coming out of the couch, the couches. And when the stuffing was coming out of the couches, those are the times you didn't invite your friends in the house. Now, when she got the material and sewed something pretty on the edge of the arm, we felt better about it, let visitors come in. But but those are the real life situations that a lot of our students are living in, and I hope we don't lose sight of that. So I I hope we don't take for granted that we're going to just. So I, I hope we don't take for granted that we're going to just say everybody log on and then, then the kids got to deal with the peer pressure and, uh, people being constantly and, and, and bullying just based on what it looks like in their background. And it's going to happen. I've seen grown folks do these Zoom videos. When they hang up the phone, they start talking about how people's background looked and what was in the house and, and what their husband was yelling. So I, I, I hope we're serious about when we, when we, when we do the, the group learning that, uh, we, we make sure that we're blocking the students' backgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Flores?
I only have one item and, um, it's a very tragic item. Uh, I would like us to, uh, have a moment of silence for our second grade student Alexis Barrios, who committed suicide, uh, about a week and a half ago. And, uh, I've never, ever felt such despair and tragedy. Cause my granddaughter is six years old and that means that it's this little, this little baby was only one year older. And, uh, you know, it just speaks to what we have to do for, um, you know, our mental wellness, uh, for all our families. I, I've, I, I'm just was so depressed and heartbroken. And so, Madam President, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for him and his family. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Um, Mr. Gallo?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Um, this has been quite an evening, hasn't it? My word. But, uh, it goes with the times, I guess, doesn't it? And, uh, I too want to thank, uh, Dr. Volkermer and his entire team, our entire cabinet, directors, team. I mean, look, I know everybody's out there, uh, working very hard to figure out how they can best serve students. And I really do applaud our district, uh, team for, for doing that. Um, this is, uh, uh, unprecedented times and, uh, but there's a lot of other people out there suffering without, uh, being paid, without, uh, uh, jobs, uh, not knowing what their future is, uh, uh, with any certainty. And, uh, um, those are, those are members of our community. In fact, that's the bulk of our community. And, um, and I know we haven't lost sight of that. And so this work is appreciated not only by the board, uh, but by them as well. And, um, uh, that's why you do it. I know that's why we do it, um, is to make life better for those around us here in this poorest community, one of the poorest communities in the United States. And, um, uh, and I love the heart of our board members and cabinet and team. And, um, uh, we are truly in this together. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President. And, um, I'm sure I can echo a lot of what, you know, my colleagues, our colleagues here have said, uh, just with everything that's going on. And, uh, I'd like to also express my appreciation to all of our staff that are out there, you know, working hard and, uh, working from home and also the ones that are coming in, uh, every day, our ELC as well. Um, one thing, you know, that seems like it's come up a lot tonight, um, and something that I don't even think we, we'll know the outcome of it until the future, and especially next year is the, the emotional and traumatic impact that all of this is having. Not only our students, but our families, our community, our employees, um, each and every one of us. And to start to plan on how are we going to address, you know, the trauma of this? We, we already have a city that we know, um, a lot of our students and children expose a tremendous amount of trauma, um, you know, just from our city itself and everything that happens within our town. But now we, we've added this, um, to everything and it just has exponentially raised the, the level of trauma for all of us to a, a level that I don't even think any of us were ever prepared for, including myself. So, you know, we talk about supplemental concentration spending, and this is something that's, uh, been on my heart ever since I've come on the board and even prior to that as a parent. And, you know, how do we deal with trauma? How do we, um, work with our students that are suffering on the inside and our staff as well, um, with our social emotional learning? I think we've come a, a long, long way, um, since I came on the board. What we've done has been tremendous, but we have to do even more. And I know we can't, I've said this before, we can't, uh, do it on our own. We're going to need additional funding from the state. And, you know, I just want that to stay at the forefront for us. And, uh, again, when we talk about supplemental concentration money, I know that money could be used for that for sure. Um, you know, if we have to, uh, just look at how we're, we're funding our money from those particular funds. And if it's general fund or supplemental concentration, whatever it may be, um, I just want to make sure that that's at the forefront going into next year, uh, preparing for working with our students and our staff when we come back, um, and get to finally go to school face to face with each other and, and experience school as, as we know it before. And, um, as Dr. Volkermer has said, uh, when we come out of this, we'll be better than when we went in it. And, uh, we're going to have a lot of different ways to educate our kids. But, uh, just want to make sure we keep those services at the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Um, I just wanted to say thank you to, um, our Madam President as well, um, for, um, organizing all of this and have been really, really patient and showing great, great leadership as well as, um, our best, our VP, Scott Wyatt Harold. Uh, uh, you are definitely a great leader and this only shows, uh, when you are able to handle a situation that nobody expected us to ever be in. So I wanted to say thank you to the whole district, those that are still currently working. Um, we appreciate you. Um, I also want to rec, I want to mention to those that are watching, um, the, the importance of making sure that you're staying indoors. Um, but if you're needing to go to the store, to please don't take your whole family. I've gone to the grocery stores and I would see the whole family. Um, and, and being mindful of the safety, uh, of those around and always of course, making sure you're washing your hands properly for 20 seconds. I think there's an A, you know, a song, either a Happy Birthday song or something like that, that you can do with warm water, not touching your face. And, um, there's so many different, uh, masks that you can make yourself. I'm not saying that that would be the, the, the ones that would necessarily remove everything, but at least it's something that you can protect and, and really taking it serious. I think this is a time where we actually, um, do as much as we can in order to flatten the curve. Uh, people are, are dying. It's realization. It's, it's, those are numbers, but those are individuals, um, in our community. And we have to really take this serious for those who, who haven't. Um, I think it was, um, this past weekend, I went to the store to grab some, um, essential items and still noticed people were, um, were gathering, um, several cars and in large numbers and partying. And so I just want to make sure people are really looking at this and, uh, for the safety of everyone, just to make sure that they're taking this serious as well.
Thank you. Thank you, board members. I think I got everyone for your comments. And again, you know, I can't say enough to the district about the support that they've been given. And that's why earlier I use the word heroes, because heroes are rising every, every day. And it's important because, you know, we're, we're in this, but each day things change and you have to readjust. And everyone is readjusting and, and focusing on the positive aspect of what this will be on the other side. I'm glad also to, to know and to see that our mental health providers again are just coming together because we have truly disrupted the, the home, which has been, you know, the place where it's away from school, but now everything is here in the home and it's a lot. And so, you know, the tragedies that are occurring, we have to be on the front lines. And like I said earlier, I'm an essential worker myself because that's the work that I choose to do. And so it, things have changed, but we're going to have to work together to create this new type of normal for the sake of students and families and, and all the individuals that are out there trying to get through this. Um, so I just encourage you all to take your time, say your prayers and just be thankful each day, you know, that you are alive and know that there are people that are suffering even on your very street that you live on. We, we don't know that because there was a time when you didn't really reach out. But now a lot of individuals are doing that more and I'm grateful for that. Um, what you just mentioned, um, Ms. Rosales Medina, I had my first opportunity to, um, do an online shopping at one of our local grocery stores. So I'm going to see how that goes tomorrow. I, I thought it was great. I went online. I'm like, oh, this is easier than I thought, something that I never would have done before. But now, you know, we are, we're faced with these times and we do have to change. So again, thank you all for your, your support, your work, and let's continue to move things forward and be great. Thank you. All right. So we are now at superintendent and staff. That would be you, Dr. Volkermer.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, board, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Um, words, words, at least for me, really fall short of, um, trying to describe what's happened in the last four weeks and, and the way that our team has risen, uh, to the challenge at every level of the organization. Um, our managers, our teachers, our classified employees, every, everyone has pitched in. And the, the, the term I'm using is they haven't moved mountains, they've moved mountain ranges. The, the whole big, you know, thing of it. Um, and as you've heard tonight, it's a work in progress. We've still got work left to do, uh, despite the, the long days, the Sundays, the Saturdays, uh, the late evenings, the early mornings. Um, people have just given their all to get us to the point where we're at. Um, we're, we're serious about improving our systems and we're excited about that work. Um, and we want to continue to be deliberate and intentional for the good of our kids and the good of our community. That's really what every ounce of effort that all of these people have given is about is, is serving our community, um, and making it better for our students. So I thank you for that. Um, as hard as it might be to remember, uh, there was a time when kids and teachers actually came together in the same place and, and competed and did some fun things. And so I'm really happy to share, um, a few, um, successes that we haven't had a chance to share at a board meeting. I want to congratulate a Royal Valley High School history teacher, Jerry Wright, and his students for their presentation of their documentary at this year's Claremont Colleges Chicano Latino Studies Film Festival. Uh, they did a tremendous job. We want to congratulate, um, students from two of our schools for being History Day champs. Uh, Pocuma K-8, uh, school, elementary division, uh, participant award and Chavez Middle School, junior division, group exhibit, students Blanca Chavarin and Fernanda Gallardo, Gallardo, and individual website, Isaac Adams. And the theme of this year's History Day competition was breaking barriers in history. Then we want to recognize, uh, a couple of our schools. Uh, huge shout out to Pacific High School, who has been awarded the 2020 Civic Learning Award of Distinction. This is actually the third time they've, uh, received that particular recognition. They also, uh, earned it in 2017 and 19. And the Civic Learning Award celebrates public schools' efforts to engage students in civic learning and service learning in their communities. So we want to congratulate Dr. Ramundo and all the pirates out there that have done a great job. And then finally, and most recently, we want to, um, recognize and celebrate with, um, with you, the Business and Logistics Academy at a Royal Valley High School that has awarded linked, the Linked Learning Alliance's Gold Certification. So that's another gold certification, uh, in what is quickly becoming a string of them with our career pathways. We're very excited about the work that they're doing. Um, they've demonstrated the academy links, that the academy links career learning with rigorous college prep coursework and work-based learning experiences at the very highest level. So we're proud of what's happening with our students, uh, and our, our schools. Thank you. Those are my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Volkermer. All right, we, we are now at 10.0 consent item. I had one earlier, so let's go ahead and take the vote.
So move.
Second. Been moved and properly second. All right. What do we need to take off?
Madam President, it's Dr. Flores. I didn't have a time to, um, write my initial. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'd like to pull 10.11, 10.12, 10.14, and 10.18.
All right. Are there any others that are pulling? I don't see any.
Madam President, this is Scott Wyatt. I need to pull 10.17.
Okay. All right. I saw you. Dr. Wyatt, anyone else? And I know, um, Dr. Volkermer, 10.13, right?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. All right, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. I have to keep track of you all. I don't have any more in front of me. Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, aye. All right. Motion carried. Let's start with, okay, we'll go, go ahead and start with 10.13.
Oh, how about 10.11?
10.11? Okay, we'll do 10.11.
All right, um, this is for Dr. Volkermer. Um, the amount isn't there and the date, uh, should it, should we add ratify, approve and ratify? Or, uh, I'm just asking.
I'm looking, Dr. Flores. Give me just one second to get to the right page.
Okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask Janie to speak to this, if you would, Janie, please.
Sorry, I lost my board docs. So I'm trying, I think it was, um, 10.11.
Yes.
It's for digital networks. What was your question?
Is, does it say ratification or does it say approve?
Um, in my.
Oh, there it is. Ratification. I'm so sorry. It does say ratification. Okay. Oh, I know what my question was. There isn't an amount. Do you know what the amount is?
Let's see. I have my notes that it's for infrastructure, cabling, equipment and services, and I lost my board docs right now. So, um, let's see. I can find out from the team.
Janie?
Cause there's no, that was my question. There was no amount on there. So I, I'm kind of wary of not to approve something with, when there's not an amount there.
So this says it's expired, the contract is just to extend it.
Correct.
Just to extend the existing contract you've already approved.
So there's no additional costs?
No, it's just an extension.
Okay, then, uh, I move to accept.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you. It's been moved improperly second. Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. All right. I think we're going in order, so it's going to be 10.12.
Okay, so I just wondered, it says $390,000. Is that for the whole amount or is that yearly?
So this is, um, an approval for a new backup and recovery system. And the backup system will help provide quicker recovery of critical IT systems. This goes back to the ransomware. Um, because I lost my board docs, I believe it's annual. I'm waiting to hear from Mike.
Because it says, uh, from March 18th, 2020 to March 17th, 2025.
Yes, it's the, it's, so, uh, Mike said it's the entire amount.
For the, for the five years?
A three years of support included.
You mean five years? Cause it's 2020 to 2025. That's what it says, effective March 18th, 2020 to March 17th, 2025.
So it's one time and it's for three years of support, uh, support included in that one time.
Okay, so, so it won't go to 2025. It'll only go to three years?
I think it's just the support that's for three years.
Okay, but we have.
He said, yes, it's for five years.
For five years.
But it includes three years of support.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved improperly second.
Okay, it's been moved improperly second. Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. And the next one, I believe it's 10.13. Was that the next one?
Yes, Madam President, we're just, we're just pulling this because of the timing with closure. The service probably won't be provided. If we were to return to it, we'll bring it back to you, but just a poll for the...
All right, great. 10.14, was that the next one?
Yes, I have to recuse myself because I am in the board.
How do you do that? Turn your camera off?
Funny.
You're going to set the example for us. Let us know when you're out of the room. Let me see.
Oh, come on.
Hey, this is live. All right.
Now make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Is, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved improperly second. Mr. Gallo, vote?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, aye. All right, she can click or come back on or say something. All right, is it 10.18?
Please don't ask her to say anything.
10.17.
One, is it 17? Okay, I skipped. Okay, I'm sorry. 10.17 is, is that a recuse for you or?
Yes, it's a recuse for me, Madam President. It's actually a contract of services with county superintendent of schools that I supervise. Even though there's no cost affiliated with it, I just don't want it to see as a bias or preferential treatment.
Absolutely. Thank you.
See you later.
It's been moved improperly second. Click off. All right, Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Click back on. Okay, is 10.18 was the last one, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, that's the one that I asked for. Sorry. Let me, let me, look, I think it says approve. Should it be ratify? Harold?
I believe it.
It does ratify.
It does say ratify, Dr. Flores.
Oh, just, I guess I miscued. Okay, sorry. Okey dokey. So, so moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved improperly second. Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Thank you. All right, we are now at 11, 11.0 action items and 11.1, I see him clicking on. 11.1, we can't hear you.
Oh, as presented.
So move. Second.
It's been moved improperly second.
I, yeah, I made a lengthy discussion on this one.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman? Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. 11.2, Special Education Community Advisory Committee, CAC members.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Here we go. Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried.
Madam President.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I, did I miss you, Mr. Gallo?
Oh, you, you got me. Just point of order. Is this just random solicitation of board members?
Yes, it feels good to hear that.
Madam President, can I, can we take items?
That's not the legal question. You, seasoned people let me know.
Three, four and five together?
I would like to. If you guys say it's okay, somebody give me a motion.
We can, motion move. Board ongoing initiatives, board top 10 and board follow-up altogether.
I'll second it.
Okay, was it more than a second? Karen, did we thoroughly confuse you? Did you get those? Hopefully yes.
Yes, I did get them.
Okay, great. All right, here we go. It's been moved improperly second, so we are going to take the vote. Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, 12.1, summary of board requests. Dr. Volkermer?
Actually, Dr. Menares is our new follow-up person.
Okay.
Okay, so let's see.
Oh, my God.
Not, not, you know, just a little bit of back and forths tonight, but I think I got them all. So I'm going to start with, there was a request to develop an FAQ for common questions that arise from public comment. A request for the number of devices being, being taken from the classrooms so that we have a running stats on what, how many devices we have. Look into printed materials for preschool through first grade students so that it's not a solely digital platform. Look, Dr. Flores specifically, I wasn't sure about capturing this one, but I wrote it down. Would like to see a sampling of the resources for English learners and the accommodations that are available to our English learners. Thank you. You captured it. Okay, good. What is the percentage of teachers using Google Classroom? Dr. Hill asked that question. Consider agendizing the res... Oh, this was Dr., this was Mr. Tillman. Consider agendizing when the start of school would be for 2020, 21. Look for methods to incentivize creativity of our teaching staff and share that creativity with their peers. That was Mr. Gallo. I captured this, the, the final request that the board took action on, which was to have a formal legal counsel's analysis and opinion of how all of our supplemental concentration funds were used.
I don't think, is it not all?
No.
Not all?
Not all.
Karen, you captured that, don't you, in the, in the official vote?
Yes, I did, but I am going to go back and review, make sure I got it. I thought it was just the line item.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Well, then, yeah, and it's, it's simply to get a legal review. I want, I, I want a legal review that we are abiding by all of the laws and have not violated any impropriety.
Correct.
Consider how we might, we can block or protect our students, the background of their home environment or where they're located when they're doing virtual meetings so that there isn't any peer pressure. That came from Mr. Tillman. Mr. Wyatt asked to ensure that we continue to have adequate funding for student wellness services or SEL, especially as we come out of our school closures. And that's all I have.
All right, Ward, did she miss anything? On that Google background thing, I don't know. We know it's in Zoom, but sometimes there's a, something you can click on and it kind of regulates your background. So I, I'm sure you experts probably know that. All right, well, thank you. We are at item 12 point, oh, no, not 12, 13 point. Oh, is there, does, does anybody have something to say?
Move to adjourn.
Or second.
Ooh, all in favor, we are adjourned.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. Aye. Thank you for being here. We will see you again at our next regularly scheduled board meeting. Please stay safe. Please continue to just follow all of the rules and all of the laws. Do not take any chances. Thank you so much.
Good night.